Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, July 6, 2022. It's 6:00 PM. We're convening a special meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. And I'll call the meeting to order and ask our city clerk to please give us a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Peak.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem McAdams.
Here.
Council members Emilio.
Here.
Coletti.
Here.
Pedory.
Yeah.
Smith.
Here.
And Tomlinson.
Present.
All are present in person.
Thank you. As mentioned, we have one item on the agenda. And I'll ask a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
If we have a vote, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmembers Emilio.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Pedory.
Aye.
Smith. You already said aye. And Tomlinson.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda of the special meeting.
Thank you. And now I'll call to order our regular meeting, occurring simultaneously because we're so efficient. And I'll turn to Councilmember Pedory. Will you please lead us in the pledge? Please, ma'am. All right. The next item is approval of the agenda. And I recommend approving the agenda with the deferral of item 11A, ordinance amending the salary classification schedule until July 20. Councilmember Tomlinson.
I would also like to propose moving item 13B up. It is the Skate Park Project Proposal Concept Review. I don't, I don't think it'll take long, but I do think asking the members of the community, the youth in particular, to stay up till the wee hours to participate is not ideal. And the feedback we've, we've received from the rec board does involve a lot of interested folks and youth. So if we can move it forward, that would be good. I'm thinking 12.
A.
12, 12A.
Okay.
On move that we approve that agenda. Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio.
Aye.
Councilmembers Tomlinson.
Aye.
Pedory. Pedory.
Aye.
Coletti.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem McAdams.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda as amended.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Pyric, do you have any closed session announcements?
No, there's no report out of closed session.
Mr. Harvey, any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Keel, Keel, excuse me, our interim community development director has an announcement. I believe he is online. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just a quick announcement on July 21st. The staff is going to be hosting a public outreach meeting for parklets, for the permanent parklet program. We're going to be meeting at City Hall in the City Council chambers at 12:00 noon. That's July 21st.
Any council announcements? Councilmember Coletti.
Well, I would just like to recognize the fact that our colleague, Mr. Emilio, became Mayor Pro Tem on July 1st, and that the city clerk recognized that during roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Congrats, Mayor Pro Tem Emilio. I wanted to announce on the consent agenda is the call out to look for applicants. Anybody's interested to run for the November 8th election. There are three seats becoming available. And I just wanted to announce to the public that I'm not going to be running again as an incumbent for my seat. So if that helps, anyone who might be on the fence to know that, you know, I'm, I will not be running again, please throw your name in the hat, and I highly encourage it. I've had a lot of fun. My reasons for not running are purely time management with raising a family and taking a little break for the next couple of years. I will stay involved and connected to the community. It means a lot to me to be a part of serving our community. So I will find other ways to serve. And I want to make myself available for anyone interested. So I'll have coffee with you, conversations, phone call, whatever I could do to help teach someone how to run a campaign, how to get elected, and then even, you know, stay on as a mentor when you're on council. Some folks did that for me, and I really appreciated it. And it made all the difference when I threw my name in the hat to run four years ago. Thanks.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And as my son will be entering his senior year, Pacific Grove High School, go Breakers. I too am not going to be running for reelection. I would encourage anyone who is interested in running, please reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to mentor, answer questions honestly. And I know that it does seem like a daunting task to run for office, but it is worth it, and it is an exceptional experience. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't make an announcement. So you know where I stand. Anyway, the I wanted to bring up that the mayor and I attended the opening of the New Start Recovery Solutions. It used to be the Beacon House, and they've really done a tremendous job in regards to everything about the house. The new solutions, New Start Solutions. I also wanted to bring up the fact that on June 18th, we had with cooperation of the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce, Jenny Earl, we performed, we went ahead and did the Uvalde Memorial. One community member mentioned it was one of them more outstanding community events. Congressman Jimmy Panetta's office, Susan Brassa also spoke. And there was a Spanish-speaking Methodist minister that also spoke in Spanish. And also Hindi speaker to also spoke in regards to that. Major Chaplain Ellington eloquently explained, he was from Texas, and he eloquently explained his situation, how he was familiar with that. I also attend and also the Pacific Grove Unified School District. Christie Dawson, from President of the Chamber, came also. Also, the, I also recently saw a movie at the Assilmar Conference Center, and it featured Amanda Pierce, who did, I think, approximately 500 birdhouses. And it was unbelievable to watch that. And the amount of birds that have returned to Assilmar to raise their families, and their families are being raised. And it was really outstanding. That's all.
Councilmember Pedory.
I wasn't planning to speak, but I just realized that the two women in council are not running anymore. So I would encourage anybody that's applying, especially women. We need diversity on the council. Please do apply. Thank you.
I have one announcement and one question. The announcement is there'll be a wildfire safety session tomorrow at 6:00 PM. I believe it's all virtual. Mr. Harvey, is that right?
That's correct.
All right. And that will be run by the, by the Monterey Fire Department, which is the Pacific Grove Fire Department as well. So I have a question. And since we're talking about campaigning in election season for our city clerk, would you please tell us how and where interested candidates can obtain the forms? There's, not to get anybody nervous, but there's FPPC forms, 501, 410. We need to, need to come to the city clerk office. Could you please help us out?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The nomination period opens up on July 18th. And that runs through the 12th, but because we have two incumbents that will not be running again, it extends the period through August 17th. Nomination papers, along with all the other papers, such that Mayor Peak has referenced, 501s and, and 460s and 410s and so forth, can all be picked up between that time. If you are already knowing that you will be running for council, and you would like to start speaking to people and raising money and so forth, a 501, an FPPC 501 form is required to be filed in my office. We have our handbook that is on the city clerk's elections webpage. It's got a tremendous amount of information in it. And if I can answer any further questions, feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email.
Could you tell us, when will your office be open to receive these forms?
The office will be open. They can be received in my absence tomorrow. I believe they can be received by our HR manager, our director. And the office is open from 8:00 to 12:00, or 1:00 to 5:00.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention about the forms. They're all done online also. They're easily, the 410s, the 510s are called. They're easily accessible online, too.
As a good, that's a great point. That you download them, fill them out, sign them, and then bring them to the city clerk or mail them into Sacramento. That gets the ball rolling. Okay. We'll now turn to public, general public comment. Anyone wishing to speak tonight here in person, please come forward. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jenny McMurdo. I'm the president and CEO of the Pacific Grove Chamber. Just two items tonight. First, I wanted to thank the community and the council and the city staff that helped us with a really great celebration on Monday, Independence Day in Jewel Park. It was a new location, but it seemed to go really well. So thank you all for attending. And then tomorrow night is Moto Bike Night on Lighthouse between Forest and 18th. That is a partnership that we have with WeatherTech Raceway Laguna Seca. So all those superbike drivers are going to do meet and greets. It's only two hours, 5:30 to 7:30. Hope some of you come out for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak here? Welcome. She is in the, in the cloud.
We have a slide presentation. I guess she knows that.
I do. I will be presenting it on your behalf.
Okay. Does she do the slide presentation?
Yes, she just confirmed she has it. She will do that.
Oh, there she is. Okay. Good evening. I'm Carmelita Garcia, and I'm a member of the Pacific Grove Deer Awareness Group. And this is Atticus Hortoli and Carrie, or I'm sorry, Renee Nestor. And Carrie Rotelli is out there, and Christine Chatwell and Lisa. Anyway, so we're here to do a really quick presentation about what our group is doing. And so we were established in, a couple of years ago, in response to the next slide, Sandra, trauma that a resident experienced after experiencing, after witnessing a collision between a car and a fawn. And the slide, you can see our two crosswalks that we photographed that demonstrate the vulnerability that the doe particularly and, and its fawn have when crossing. So one is at Congress and Pine, and the other one is Lighthouse at Pacific Street. So what we decided to do was that perhaps we could help the public by developing their awareness through education. And so this is what we've accomplished so far. Next slide.
Earlier this year, the Monterey Bay Charter School, MBCS, partnered with PG Deer Awareness on a project whereby second and fourth grade students learned facts about PG's native black-tailed deer and how to live harmoniously with them. Afterwards, the students drew artwork and wrote their thoughts on what they had learned. And you can see some of their artwork in this slide. We received over 55 pieces of artwork from the MBCS students. And this is just a very small, this is just three of them. The students' artwork was then displayed at, in our booth at the MBC Spring Fair in April. And then the following week, it was displayed, they were displayed at Good Old Days. Next slide, please. In addition to displaying the students' artwork, we provided in our booth a space for parents and teens and children, anyone of any age, to draw their own interpretation of the best ways to protect deer and live in harmony with our native deer. Both events were very successful. We had waiting lines. Children waited patiently in line to get their chance to draw, to see the other students. Work was inspiring to them. And PG Deer Awareness seeks to collaborate with local schools on more educational outreach programs such as this in the future. Thank you. Next slide, please. I'll also speak about this next one. One of our members, Christine Chatwell, I'd like to recognize her. She's an artist, and she painted this deer. And it was a painting that we then did a screen, a screen, screen print of. And we prevent, and we presented, we made these T-shirts that we're all wearing, and they are available for sale now on our website. They also have tote packs. Thank you.
The Monterey Herald in December did a front page story on our group, and it was very positive and well-received. Next slide. The police department posted this fawn season blurb on Facebook. And these other photographs just show some of the deer that are in our community. There's a huge herd of doe right there. Next slide. And so the City Hall has also helped us in posting information for help. Public Works has assisted us, the hospitality industry, the Chamber of Commerce, the museum, and the library. Next slide. Public Works has put up new signs, the deer signs that you can see, and they're very effective. We designed collectively the rec card that you have a copy of that provides information, do's and don'ts about the deer, and also telephone numbers to call in the event you see an injured deer or something of concern. Next slide. And so on the city's website, it's under Public Works Wildlife Resources, that protecting our native deer is the link that you can pull up that gives you information.
We're almost done, just like two slides. Thank you. So we put together this map using social data, data from our Facebook group, our Instagram group, our Next Bar group, personal photos. It's not a very scientific study, but it's the first shot at trying to do a bit of a census of the city and the populations. You can see there the fawns in red, the does in green, and the bucks in blue. The map does miss a little bit at the bottom. But we've tried to just map out this year, what have been the observations. Our idea behind this is to hopefully partner with whatever wildlife, wildlife ordinance comes forward, maybe get this going and build some better scientific rigor and momentum around this and look at it year over year. So make, if we take another snapshot next year, we can see if the population's changing, if it's increasing, decreasing, if we're making an impact. Next slide, please. There's a big pause for thinking. Thank, thank you so much for all the support that you've all given us. And just for reference for people here in the public and for you guys as well, we put links to our groups in there. Carmelita has graciously offered to be our, our public liaison for questions by her phone and email. I really appreciate that. And then we also just included some of the other information for public as well to know, you know, what to do, who to call when you see an injury or have a collision or, or something else. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak here in person? All right. Now we'll turn to our virtual audience. Anyone?
Yes, Mayor. Tom Aikman?
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. We're going to continue in the wildlife theme a little bit. Mine may not be as pleasant as that one was. And we've got some important information, though, I think we need to share. Kim and I have just finished double-checking all our data and the photos from this past year's harbor seal pupping season. We're going to try to write some informed reports about it. But I think you know that the pupping on PG this beach this year was disrupted by loud noises from roadwork along adjacent Ocean View Boulevard. We now know that that disruption cost the lives of several of our harbor seals. In short, we lost a third of our pups this year. We've documented a total of 29 failed births, a number far beyond anything considered normal or natural. For comparison, last year, when there was no roadwork, there were five failures. Veteran docents that monitor the seals closely enough to, to track successful births and failures have seen the range of miscarriages, premature births, stillborns, and full-term live births whose mothers have been frightened away and they've abandoned their pups. We also keep track of as many variables as we can. The ocean conditions, the food supply, human disturbances, and natural predation. The one difference we could isolate clearly this year was the construction noise from the roadwork. We saw two miscarriages before it started in mid-February. And we saw a heartbreaking 23 during the eight weeks that the noise was going on. And we saw four more after federal officials stepped in and stopped it. For comparison, last year, we had three in that early stage. Only one during that eight-week period where we saw 23 this year, and only one after that. And that's five fatalities last year, 29 this year. It was avoidable. You may remember that we called in to the March 2nd City Council meeting to warn you that the timing of the roadwork was a mistake, and we believed it was illegal, and asked you to intervene and delay it. Instead, for whatever reason, the council voted six to one to continue the work scheduled. When the calamity on the beaches became obvious, we turned to the federal regulators, and they stepped in. This was a costly mistake. We're now trying to turn into a case study in the hopes that it doesn't happen again. If it does, we plan to ask federal officials to intervene earlier next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Haines.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank four people. The first is Tom Aikman for the important information that he just provided to your council. I hope you take very seriously what he just told you. The second is, I want to thank Amy Tomlinson for always seeming to have read and understood the agenda reports. I certainly didn't always agree with her, but I did feel like her preparation for council meetings had been thorough and well-done. I thank her for that. Third, I want to thank Councilmember McAdams for her public information postings on social media. I found them very helpful, and I think other people have. So I appreciate that she's done that. And last but not least, I want to thank our new city attorney for his editing of Agenda Item 12C. I appreciate very much and feel very hopeful because of what I saw in the last-minute errata sheet tonight. So I thank those four people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Aikman?
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm going to continue a little bit with the disruption to this past pupping season, which shows how badly this city needs a wildlife officer and/or a wildlife commission. The impacts of construction of all sorts will vary depending on ambient land, air, and sea conditions. Seals have excellent senses that far exceed our own, and they're very sensitive to sound disturbances. They are vulnerable to varying degrees of disturbance at different times of their life cycle and depend, depending on their cumulative life experiences. So if they have had multiple disturbances throughout their life, doesn't mean they get used to it. They actually may be disturbed quicker. This is not new information. This is known worldwide, and it shouldn't take NOAA to tell the city to follow the law. We certainly can do better. This is the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary, and as such, we are held to a higher standard. The seals are a huge tourist draw here and now have nearly 13,000 daily followers on their Facebook page. It is good for the environment. It's good for the community, and it's certainly good for business to protect our wildlife. It is what bring the tourists here. With this in mind, it is time to move forward with a wildlife officer and/or a wildlife commission. We seem to be able to do other things and get money for other events or projects. I'm, I'm sure this is long overdue and should be a priority. Now, I invite any of you to contact me and come down to Hopkins to learn more about our seals and wildlife. I would be happy to show you the seals and, and teach you something about their behavior and how they are. And maybe you'll even get to see one of our fan favorites, Dottie McScarbelly. But definitely, please come down and get to know the seals a little bit more. So I invite you to, to contact me at any time. I'm down there frequently. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lori McDonald?
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Wait for the timer. Thanks. Thank you so much for letting us speak. I just wanted to pig, piggyback a little on what Kim was saying. We've had a lot of disturbances this week with drones, and it's becoming a bigger concern that I just want to bring to the council's attention. We have not only the harbor seals, which we're trying to, to keep from, you know, being disrupted, but we also have oyster catchers, which we're looking very closely at trying to keep off the endangered species list. And they have been disturbed by drones. We finally have chicks this year, and we really want to see them survive. So I think part of having that wildlife officer and the wildlife commission that could be very beneficial is having them respond in a timely manner to these incidents. It's something that the police are often not able to respond to in a timely manner. And maybe having clearer guidelines that, that let tourists know that just because the flight app tells them it's safe to fly because they're five miles from the airport does not mean that they're not violating the city ordinance for no drones. So I just want to bring that as a further concern to the city council, but I'd like to find, maybe if we, you know, put something together where we're finding ways to get that education out to the public so that we're not disrupting the wildlife. Thank you so much for letting me be heard. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That concludes the virtual public comment, Mayor. Oh, I'm okay. I have one more. Tina, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to
Thank you. I wanted to talk to everybody about the My Pacific Grove app that's now available. You can view city manager reports, the rec program, reserve spaces for events. You can view agendas and minutes. New resident information is there. There's a permit center and service requests along with all of this. The convenience was fantastic. I wanted to let you know that I did have an issue on our street. We live on a one-way street, and I use the app to enter a new service request. It was acknowledged. Signage was added. I received a text that the signage was added and that the project was put on pause due to overlapping roadwork. About a week later, I was texted that a new arrow was painted at the intersection. It was easy to use, and I would encourage everyone that wants to have a conversation with the city staff to use that. The one recommendation I would make is that we find a way to send that information only to the staff position that's responsible for whatever that particular issue is, so that it doesn't go out to the mayor of the city council and an additional 100 people that probably don't need to see it. But it was great, and I think it's great progress, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes virtual public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Now turn to the consent agenda. Any council member wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, any member of the public?
Your Honor, I'd like to pull one.
Okay.
Like pull 8B Planning Commission regular meeting format.
Okay. Any member of the public wishing to pull another consent agenda item? I'm not seeing one in person. How about a virtual audience?
I see no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I suggest we move that Planning Commission regular meeting format, 8B, we move that to 12B. So we'll hear the 12A will be skate park, 12B will be planning commission, and then safe parking will be, you know, CD and E. Okay. May I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda spoken.
Mayor, we have a vote, please.
Thank you. I didn't catch that second.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Emilio.
Hi.
Councilmember Pedori.
Hi.
Mayor Peake.
Hi.
Councilmembers Coletti. McAdams.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
And Tomlinson.
Aye.
Quotient carries seven zero to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll describe what we just did very briefly. We approved council minutes from June 15 and June 29. We've adopted a resolution calling an election on November 8, and that includes city officials, myself, and council members. And let's see, we received minutes from the Monterey Slade Transit Board from Mayor Protem Emilio. We've received a report of ratification of new local actions from Mr. Harvey, of which there were none. And we received minutes from the Economic Development Commission in May, and the Planning Commission minutes to dates in May. And that concludes our consent agenda. And now we'll move on to item 12A, which is the skate park, which was originally 13B. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I will go ahead and give a brief overview. Awesome, they're moving forward. I so the whole point of this item is to get a concept review and kind of a discussion going up here on council and with the public, and mostly to inform and have a little bit of a two-way dialogue going on about where we're at with the skate park project. I'll start by a quick recap. You know, we allocated seed money through the ARPA funding back just last month. And that is, you know, a fantastic indication that council has interest, and then there is some support, but there's still a long way to go on where on getting a skate park put into the community. And so last week or last month, we had a rec board meeting on June 23 where we wanted to outline the process as we understand it so far. It's a seven-step process, and we're at step one. And so we asked the rec board to work with city staff to accomplish step one. I'm going to quickly go over the seven steps. It's in the agenda report, but just as a review, the first one is to identify a location, which we'll talk about here in a moment. Let's say we've done all that work. That's not going to be an easy process, but we do need to identify the location first before we can do any kind of any of these other things. Once we have that location identified and we feel strongly about it with a strong score and good public outreach and involvement, we'll ask, they ask, we'll come to council to retain an engineer. And that we're anticipating that'll be 10 to 15% of the project costs. So it's not cheap to retain an engineer, but that engineer would then take that location and draft up what the skate park could look like, do some designs and sizing and scope of the project. So that's kind of the step two and three. All along the way, you know, the rec board subcommittee, as well as working with the community in order to to build this scope and project and design and then bring it back to council. If council is as happy with step three, we would then we have a better understanding of what is the funding that's needed. And now how are we going to go forward with securing that construction funding? It'd be a combination of donations and grant writing, some city funds, and we'd have a lot of the money raising conversations. That doesn't have the steps two, three, and four can kind of happen together or, you know, simultaneously, not necessarily one after the next. We'll be looking at funding all along. We being the rec board. Sorry, I'm not on the rec board, but I'm the liaison. And then, of course, as well happening would be step five in looking to have this permitted and the environmental review, what kind of permits are needed? Where is the location that we picked? What are the rules for the zoning rules in that spot? Step six would be developing an actual construction plan with specifications, approving it through our various boards and commissions that apply and through council, and then implementing it into the schedule of a CIP plan. So what I'd like to hear tonight is to have anyone on council or members of the public who see a major glaring hole or have big questions or offering could offer some additional advice to this seven-step program process so that we can capture that. That would be very helpful. And and then just I'll dive in on step one as far as picking a location and the work that the rec board is about to undertake with the help of city staff, of course, of trying to identify roughly 10,000 square foot, maybe a little more, maybe a little less of an area where the skate park could fit within the city of Pacific Grove. There is attached to the agenda a scoring criteria sheet, and this is a professional scoring criteria sheet that was given to us by skate park designers and what they believe is are really good questions and ways to kind of determine and rack and stack the maybe the top three or four locations that we could come up with in the city. I will say there's five locations plugged in there right now. Those were just examples. And we, those are not the five locations. Those are not anywhere in some kind of top category. Those are just locations that we, the rec board felt like, let's look at what 10,000 square feet looks like at Caledonia, at Barrow Rock, at George Washington Park, and then begin to see how the scoring criteria sheet could work. I would say, kind of looking to Charlie here, but there's at least 15 or 20 locations that have been brought up since our initial five were put out, and they're all going to be looked at and studied with the city staff and the rec board, including getting the community's involvement. So we do have Ms. Hallaby on the line who helped with the agenda report to answer any questions that that might we might have, as she'll be a main point of contact for this. I think Katie is on the line from the rec department as well. And then we have members of the rec board here to to add anything or answer any questions. So that's an update as to how the skate park's coming along. The next steps of what we would hear from council's perspective is how did the scoring come out? What are the top sites that we've identified? And and let's get some buy-in on that one site that we want to then have an engineer spend some time on. I think that includes my report. I guess we get public comment and then continue the discussion. Thank you.
We'll start with public comment here. Please step forward to the podium. Don't be bashful.
Skate park tutoring and such and teaching over the years, and I've been biking around, looking for locations and stuff of that nature, and I've found a lot of good places.
Would you like to tell us your name, sir?
My name is James Ryan. I'm a native to Pacific Grove, and I went to PG High and everything years ago. And like I said, I'm an avid skateboarder. I've been skating for so many years in San Francisco and down in Pacific Grove, and I grew up here. And I'm really excited about this process to make the skate park, you know, and it's something that's very dear to our hearts around here because we don't have a lot of places for these kids to go to do their skateboarding. And there's a lot of like with the police and stuff of that nature. It's a fine line between where you can skate and getting kicked out and stuff like that. So it makes it really hard for these kids to have a place to go that's actually built correctly. And with the seaside skate park, they built this skate park, and they used a small area. And what they did is they put in huge ramps and building blocks of that nature. But it wasn't designed correctly for what we needed, you know, because we're looking for something that's like more of a surface area, a flat area, and then smaller blocks up to different levels of things that we can do. And it basically it takes someone to be there when they're doing it all, when they're building the park, you know, you need a guy on the ground that skates that can actually design stuff from eye level and stuff like that. Because when you have, when you go over the plans and do stuff like that, and then they just come in and do it all, sometimes things aren't built structurally proper to what skaters like and what we can advance on and use to our advantage, you know. So it's it's just disheartening over the years to see skate parks and this long process to get it done. And then when it's built, it's not built correctly, you know. So it's just, it can be really hard on us. Like, oh, man, we spent all this time, but we didn't do it right. So it's just my goal to basically get the right people involved with the money that we have and not spend a bunch of money on huge bowls and things that are too massive. What you need is more of a smaller proportional sized skate park for this area, for this small town, something of the nature of seaside, something of the nature of Monterey, something of the nature of Salinas. But we want to combine all these ideas and build Pacific Grove, something that's really like amazing, like something that all the other towns are just jealous of and like, wow, man, we had all this money, and now these places just sit desolate, not used. Over five years go by, if you go by seaside, now it becomes more of an activity for kids to come and drink and smoke and do stuff like that. And that's not what skating's about. Skating about to us is to get away from all the negativity. Kids that had a harder life, they turn to skateboarding because skateboarding gives them an outlet, and it gives them something to do. And when they always get kicked out and they always get just harassed by people, it just it doesn't do well, you know, it doesn't build up these kids. And now you see skateboarding in the Olympics. So like the level of where it's going and what I see, and it's all in my mind, it's envisioned. And it's like, we can do something really special here in Pacific Grove, but we find the right location, limited wind, limited population. We don't want it at a place like Lover's Point because it's too many people. You know, it's too many crowds.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
So basically, I just want to be involved, and I'm really excited about it all. And I'm a little nervous now, of course, you can tell, but I have a lot invested in this. And I'm going to be teaching my lessons and doing stuff like that. So we'll be hopefully doing it at the Pacific Grove Skate Park.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak here?
Hi there. It's great to see you all again. I'm Emily Housebauer. And I am on the rec board subcommittee and also helping with the community effort, kind of stirring the pot and raising awareness about the skate park. And I just wanted to bring up a couple of things, kind of like what James said. Our opportunity here is to build a skate park for families. And I think that that is something that doesn't really exist very well in Monterey County and anywhere close and accessible for our kids to get to. Because most kids who ride board and wheels, they get there on their wheels. So building a park in Pacific Grove is a neighborhood park for our kids to come to and to make friends and to learn from each other. And and it's free. So it's not free to build, but the whole point is it's free for our kids to go to and to be safe and to be seen out in our community. I think that that's something that I don't see a lot of, and I question all the time. Is there so many awesome kids in Pacific Grove, but where are they? Where are they after school? Like, I don't see older kids in our parks. And I think that this is a great opportunity to bring people out and not just for kids, but for parents. Two of my best friends I met sitting at skate parks because that's what it's all about, bringing our families together and bringing people out. And with the process of getting the skate park built, I know that location will be huge. And on the community outreach side of things, we plan on doing some events in public spaces and in our parks to bring some families out and have people feel out the areas that we're talking about building a skate park in. I think that being as transparent as possible is so important and will help us build the best park. We need to know what the little kids that roller skate want to skate on, and we need to know what our adult skaters want to skate on. And there's an opportunity to build a park that can suit everyone. And when it comes to the design process, part of designing a skate park, it's not just the engineer. Usually, a designer will come to Pacific Grove and hold three town hall meetings. That is the design building process. So there is so much time per community input. So it really will be a park made for our community. And we plan on doing a lot of public fundraising to make this thing happen. So thank you. And our email is available, and we are on Facebook, Pacific Grove Skate Park Project. And you can reach out to me anytime. I can answer any questions or point you to the right skate park professionals who can answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
My name is Kelly Sorenson. I'm the owner and founder of On the Beach Surf Shop. Started in Carmel, went to Monterey. I've pretty much helped out every city with their skate parks and have a huge history with all these skaters around here. So when it comes to kids skateboarding, give them a place to skate. PG would be a perfect place to kind of have that family-driven skate park. I'm also a father of five that wished we had a skate park in our city. I also volunteered for the Pacific Grove Ocean Rescue for 11 years. I think this would be a huge asset to Pacific Grove. And I'm here for to help anybody with the design and be on the board. But I think this would be a great asset for the city of PG. So put me to work. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll now turn to our virtual audience. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, I have one hand raised at the moment. Marsha.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was surprised to read that the city council voted to provide seed money for a proposed skate park as part of its capital improvement program based on the recommendations of the recreation board. Did city council ask for the opinions of the beautification and natural reasons? Did city council ask for the opinions of the beautification and natural resources commission members? Their opinions might differ from that of the recreation board. I suspect most Pacific Grove taxpayers would prefer that this proposed skateboard bowl seed money to go towards filling numerous potholes in the city instead. A more practical use of cement to benefit many, not a few Pacific Grove residents. Ten thousand square feet of cement does not say green or beneficial asset to me, or I suspect to the majority of its residents. Pacific Grove and Pegrovians pride themselves on supporting green projects, be they tree canopies, family parks, coastal restoration, et cetera. Respectfully, skate parks being built by city governments represents old-school thinking. Cities are not plowing six hundred thousand dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars into skate parks these days, as they have found skate parks to be a waste of taxpayer money. Skateboarding represents a passing interest for a small percentage of teens. And the teens who have a continued interest do not want to do their extreme skateboarding tricks in a city sanctioned skate park. There are liability concerns for the city, deep pockets, increased levels of graffiti and trash at skate parks, continued costly city maintenance, not to mention that skate parks can end up being a venue for inappropriate behavior like illegal drinking and illegal substance experimentation. Also, skateboarding is not supported by college scholarships. So what kind of positive attributes does skateboarding skills have for future academic success of Pacific Grove's teens as a whole? I think the skateboard park proposal should be put back on the back burner unless PG Middle School and PG High School administrators really want to cite the skateboard park at their locations. And they also want to take responsibility for pursuing funding for building the bowl and ongoing maintenance costs. Thank you for considering my opinions on this matter.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I think a skate park could be a great recreational activity for the community's youth. I'm concerned, however, about the consideration of sites in the coastal zone. Berwick Park is one of the considerations. It's in a highly scenic area on the main coastal road with views of the ocean through beautiful Monterey cypress trees. It's well-used for family picnics, games, sunbathing, sorry. As well as foraging by black-tailed deer and Canada geese to the delight of visitors and locals. Berwick Park is designated as open space recreational land use in the coastal zone. Local coastal program land use plan policy LUD-10 describes that designation as being for low, quote, "low-intensity recreational and educational activities such as walking, nature study, photography, and scenic viewing, and temporary events at Lover's Point," end quote. A well-used skate park is not consistent with these uses in a highly scenic area on the coast. Then Caledonia Park has been suggested. It's also designated as open space recreational in the coastal zone. And in addition, it's a historic neighborhood of the Pacific Grove Retreat with dense housing, narrow one-way streets on either side of the park, and limited parking. The skate park location would require removal of beautiful mature trees as well as some recently planted ones in the green area of the park, the entire green area, basically. PG's entire coastal zone is designated as an archaeologically sensitive area. And the local coastal program requires an archaeological report and monitoring as well as tribal monitoring for excavation. The archaeological resource potential is particularly high in both Berwick and Caledonia Parks, which are part of large archaeological sites designated by the state. Construction delays could occur depending on the nature of the resources that might be unearthed. And then I appreciated what the first speaker said tonight about Lover's Point Park, that skateboard park is not appropriate there and that it's been suggested that it could fit where the volleyball court is now, but it would create just the wrong atmosphere in the park. And, and does not, again, go along with land use designation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this is actually speaking for Kelsey. We are founders and I am the co-founder of Captain Stoker Coffee Roasters in Monterey and Pacific Grove as a new coming business as well. So we just wanted to speak out and say that we are also in very much belief that it would be a wonderful asset to Pacific Grove and the community over there. We haven't been here long, but we can see how the community can be a very driven force behind this and the place that it can create for the future of kids and education coming out of this particular area. I've been in action sports for a very long time and can agree that it does bring a lot of athletes and for pushing kids and adults to be highly educated on skateboarding, bike riding, you know, rollerblading, whatever it may be, to come out of this area and, you know, to go back to what Martha was saying is that it doesn't have to bring and will not bring a specific crowd on violence and graffiti. It's a very respected sport. And just like the gentleman first said, you know, all of these action sports are now coming into the Olympics and it is a very respected sport and it can be a beautiful thing and a beautiful part of the community as well to be, to be a part of and active. And a lot of community funding can be a part of it as well. So just wanted to come on and say that we are very excited to be a part of it and excited to be a part of the process and to be very supportive of this. So thank you for the consideration.
Thank you.
That concludes virtual public comment.
All right. Well, now I'll turn to council discussion. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Sorenson from On the Beach, I wanted to thank you for your ongoing support of our youth in Pacific Grove and beyond. And my son has competed in several of your skate competitions over the years. So, so thank you for that. And for councilmember Tomlinson, thank you for this presentation. And many thanks to the community members who have been really active in this and advocating for our families and youth. I appreciate that. I appreciate the seven steps that have been outlined. I think they're easy to follow. There is a lot of work to do, but I really like having that just sort of outlined and able to guide this process. And the site scoring criteria, I think is well done. Unfortunately for us, we're not the first city to build a skate park. So I think that we're really in a unique position and have this opportunity to sort of learn from other cities and take all of the good and use, and use their good experience. I do have a question for staff or actually would appreciate staff to sort of comment a little bit. I'm sort of seeing this fundraiser or the fundraising component similar to the swimming pool at Lover's Point. And if staff can just sort of refresh our memory, perhaps speak to how that was set up. I know, right? It's a long time ago. But I know, you know, that is really a good example of, it was a partnership with the community, with the city, very successful, raised lots and lots of money. If you could just sort of speak to, or maybe if Ms. Hannah's on the line, how that account was set up and how that looked like, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember McAdams. Actually, what I might draw as a good example from more recent memory, and the mayor will be able to chime in on this as well, is the library fundraising effort. We, we had a covenant with those 501(c)(3) groups involved. It was very clear how the drawdown of money took place. I won't pretend to tell you that it was fun putting that agreement together, but it was very essential and it kind of established the guideline. So I would recommend something similar to that in this instance because it's very clear as to who's doing what, how the money flows, what money is used first and, and, you know, when city, you know, if city contributions come in, when they do. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks so much. So when the community sort of gets into this active fundraising portion, or if they're not already, what, what are the next steps to sort of solidify that and, and begin, you know, having an account available?
So, thank you. I think probably one of the key things I might, you know, look to Councilmember Tomlinson and/or the rec board is identifying the players, right? And I don't know if there is a 501(c)(3) group that's involved at this point. There may or may not be. It's not required. But that might be one of the first things that folks need to start thinking about if they're going to be going through that fundraising effort because that creates, you know, the body and that allows the city, it's not, again, it's not essential. We can work around that. We can establish an account here at the city that people could just donate directly to as well. But I think that's a bigger conversation, once we kind of have an idea who's interested. And maybe it's just as simple as we have a, an interest survey of folks. I'm not sure exactly, but I'd be happy to be very involved with that. I know Dan Go and Joyce could be very helpful with that, too. You're a very capable rec board that could be a big part of this as well. Thank you.
I saw Tori, I saw Ms. Hannah sort of pop up if she would like to, to comment. Hi, hi, Tori. You're muted.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. Councilmember McAdams, who's the mayor. It is something that from our, our perspective, from an accounting perspective, like the city manager described, it could be an agreement where we set up a tracking mechanism for it and an order of use of funds where we can draw down, or we can accept donations directly at the city and create a separate fund for that.
Thank you, thank you so much for that. So obviously, this is like a conceptual discussion. I definitely support the seven steps that were, are in front of us as well as the scoring criteria. And then again, thank you to the community members and the parents who have really brought this conceptual skate park project to where it is today. I mean, that's exciting. So thanks so much.
Mayor Tim Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson, for doing this, along with all the other players, the rec board. Appreciate that. I think we need to make this happen. I think the skateboard is, park is very, very important for our youth and for our adults. And it's, it goes, it goes a long way for when I, when I was in my younger days skating down Prescott Avenue with my buddies all the way down. And I'm still alive. So anyway, but I just wanted to bring up the fact that I think this is very important for our youth. They'll be very involved. I want to call it maybe similar to pickleball, you know? It's so popular, the skateboard park. I think it's very, very important. And I would also be personally, as a council member, be happy to be involved in regards to helping with any type of fundraisers or anything like that. I do have a question for either Ms. Hallaby or is Mr. Go on? Okay, Mr. Go? Yeah, thank you. Mr. Go, you know, we had a brief side conversation about the skateboard and could I just get your thoughts on the process of this skateboard park?
Yes, sir, Mr. Emilio, members of the city council. I feel that we need to find a viable location first and do public outreach and let's secure a location before we move on to the next steps. We have a location secured. We know kind of what we're going to need to do to then fundraise, to prepare that location and ultimately build it. But then simultaneously, we can begin any environmental review that will be necessary for the determined location while we're designing conceptual plans and ultimately construction plans. So I think first step we need to do is let Public Works finish that scoring criteria, get with the skateboard subcommittee that's been developed by the recreation board, then ultimately bring those findings to the recreation board, have them approve a location with a couple options that we can then bring forth to city council to get your blessing to move forward with the subsequent steps in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Go. That was old mayor.
Councilmember Pedory.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Tomlinson, for bringing this. I must say, this is the fastest I've seen any kind of like approval of budget, getting things ready and order. And it's great, this is a seven-step process. I was not aware of the seven steps either. So it's great. So I just wanted to know that one thing, I know we're talking about locations and I believe last time somebody had raised the question of schools and whether schools need to be involved. I think it is probably a fruitful discussion to have with the schools to at least connect with them to understand, A, possibility of a location within the schools, B, whether that's, whether they're going to share costs with the city related to the program, and C, whether they're going to bear a liability related to the whole endeavor as well. So, but I think we should not just discount that. We should at least have that conversation while we're going through things and then have the city manager as a comment, please.
Councilmember Jerry, through the mayor, not to be a wet blanket, but one of the concerns that you will have with the, the school, and the council member and I did have a conversation about this yesterday, I did not bring this up at the time, but the school has very unique requirements as far as visitation and control of the site, which makes it a little bit different than a city facility, a city park, anybody can go there almost any time, not on any, but, but a school facility has different constraints. So we certainly, I'm not discouraging having a discussion with the school, but that's an additional constraint. And what I told Councilmember Pedory is that we would probably, because we don't control it, establish a pretty low score as we're looking at, at sites right now, because we just don't have the ability to say that we can build something there at this time. It doesn't mean it couldn't happen, but I wanted to throw that out there, too. Thank you.
All right. That makes sense. I just believe that the schools need to be involved in this conversation. It's, at the end of the day, my kids are, I mean, they have, number one, like, there's plenty of space the schools have as opposed to what the city has. So, yeah, I just think that should be in the frame of mind and at least whet it out and move forward. But thank you.
Councilmember Cliddy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Mr. Go, that location, and it is at the top of the list, and I appreciate this list, is definitely the thing to start with. And, and we're looking here at this, this table, this table of criteria for various locations. I would just say, remove George Washington Park, remove Berwick Park, and remove Caledonia Park. I don't think we should waste any time trying to evaluate citing a skate park in those parks. And that includes Esplanade Park and some of the other concepts that I've seen online, et cetera. I did attend, or I did zoom in to the June 23 rec board meeting. Chair Tully gave some good reasoned comments about perhaps citing it up at Arnett Park. I suppose that would be worth looking at. But I don't think, we can't kid ourselves, this is a huge expense. And there are not a few residents who've contacted me and perhaps others to wonder what we're thinking when we've got so many other things pressing needs within the city that require funding. So it is an obstacle to overcome. There's just no doubt about it. And I just don't think we should, we should try to minimize that effort. But perhaps what we do with this list, number four is secure construction funding. I would think the best thing to, if you want to go forward, is to identify the location, have staff have staff do that. But to gauge interest in this, you know, we've heard people come to the microphone, but I want to see people come with their checkbook. And I, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see those who are advocating for this project establish a nonprofit, start funding that nonprofit, and then use those funds to retain the engineer to do the draft design. So that's kind of like a matching fund. You know, we've allocated, and remember, budget is just a guideline. We haven't dedicated. I mean, we've, we've said we intend to spend that. We haven't spent it yet. So we have budgeted funds for this effort, but we haven't, we haven't actually dedicated or gone into any kind of contract that, that compels the spending. So I would like to see this nonprofit come forward, matches, raise $150,000. We've had a couple of business owners call in and speak tonight. Let's see how much money we can raise and then how quickly we can do it. If we can, if we're only going to get a few bucks, you know, coming to the community from this, then that tells me that there's really not the interest for this project. So if we can get money to pay for items two, and perhaps three, and the, and the, and the community can go out and do that, that'll show me real interest. But right now, I am plain devil's advocate, because a lot of residents have contacted me, asking me what we're thinking. And I want to be clear that this is, this project, the biggest component of this project is the fundraising effort. And that should happen sooner than later. And I think we should use some of the funds to do some of the early steps. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I tend to agree with Councilmember Coletti on this, and some of the comments that he made tonight, although I did have kind of a, the way I was thinking about this, that we really don't have that much information, although we have a really nice outline of what is possible. And I can see the potential benefits to the youth. I think that the most important considerations are funding, obviously, number one. Maybe number one would be sites, actually, because underneath funding, I think I'll just defer to the comments made by Councilmember Coletti, but on sites, there's other considerations, coastal zone, citing it in the coastal zone doesn't make a lot of sense because I don't know that it'll ever see the light of day through the coastal commission, because it will inevitably be appealed, and then it may never be heard, and things like that happen in the coastal zone. Also, the park locations in the coastal zone, I don't think there'll be interest from, on the council to build in those areas. So I think that would be my thought is take 30,000 foot view on the sites and how that could be made possible, but to locations that are viable, I guess, politically, environmentally. And finally, I think liability is, is on maintenance. Liability and maintenance is a big question in my mind. I know we received something like during the meeting on the liability, but you, we need to suss that out way more and know whether or not, if someone falls and breaks their leg, are we going to get, be dragged into court on each of those occasions? And I wouldn't, that would not be a good thing for the city. So those are my thoughts. Those are my big three thoughts. And kind of more to the point of funding, my, the, I had dinner with a friend the other night, and one thing he asked me was why, why is my street, you know, there's all these potholes on the street and things like that. I get, I get a lot of questions like that. And we spent a lot of time the last five years trying to improve the infrastructure. So there's a balance there of having to, you know, spend money and time on, on something, and then we have a lot of needs elsewhere. So there's that going on. I think overall could be a benefit to the youth, but there are a lot of obstacles, and I would like to see commitment to funding in the community. Thanks.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you might have comments, too, but I'll, I'll just jump in and say, thank you for all these comments. This is exactly what we were hoping for, was to get all of the, what are we not thinking about, and making sure that we kind of interject those. Maybe it becomes a nine step process. Maybe, maybe there's a 2B or 3C type of thing. The notes I took was, you know, liability and insurance concerns, ongoing maintenance and upkeep. Don't, don't pick spots in the coastal zone. Don't waste time in those types of parks. Funding, establish with a 501(c) sponsor if we can. And I know we have talked to a few, so just to, with the school. And anyone else who's listening, who wants to get, get their name in the hat for who we can sponsor or coordinate with, I would be all ears. And so we are connecting with the schools. And then just, I'll put my own two thoughts in about the fundraising. In, I've done a lot of fundraising for campaigns and projects and getting things built. And you're absolutely right, doing it early on and getting some, having people put their money where their mouth is, that they want to see this in their community is important. But we have to have a little bit more of the, of the cake baked, if you will, of where, where this is going to be located. Is it even an option? Most people aren't going to want to write a check if the, if it's just still, still so, just a possibility, a big maybe in the sky. So if we can zoom in and suss out, I guess, a lot of these really big items and, and still come away saying, we can actually do this, and this is the location, there's not going to be huge hurdles zoning wise and environmental wise, and the community is on board, then I'm not, I personally am not worried about raising the funding. I think that we could even set a lofty goal of having to spend no city money and do all of it via fundraising. But by, by all means, matching the amount as well. So I, I know, I just, that's a big commitment, but I do believe it's really possible to raise this amount of money in, with community interest. So the fundraising will be looked at continually as when is the right time to start, but asking people for money when you don't have a picture or any kind of location is really difficult to do. So we can't, I don't think we can get started just yet, but it's right around the corner. So those are my comments.
I thought that, thank, thank you very much for bringing this forward. And I, I can't think of any topic other than, and that would be an issue that I've already heard tonight. And so thank, thank you all for that. But I, I do want to add on to Councilmember Pedori's plea, perhaps, to talk to the school district, talk to the school board, and Mr. Harvey can talk to the school superintendent and school staff, because they've got potentially some excellent locations, you know. So please, please do that. And come back and let us know. I'm, I'm looking at the rec board member, Mr. Gibson. Come back and tell us what's happening. Please tell us about your progress, or, or have Mr. Harvey, your staff, come back and let us know how this is progressing. Thank you. All right. Now move on to the former item 12A, safe parking. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you. And I have a presentation, if Ms. Candell can share her screen. Lovely. Thank you so much. Thank you, folks, for coming tonight. Okay, and the next slide, please.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Can, can I, I'm sorry. Can I pause you a second? We, we're supposed to be hearing the former item 8A, the planning commission hybrid meetings. Sorry, my scribbled notes. That was actually next on our approved agenda, so apologies. And that, this item, Councilmember Coletti.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I noticed there were slides attached that the city manager prepared. Perhaps he can walk us through those slides.
How about the city, how about the city clerk?
Yeah, if we can get the slides up, that would be a good start. And then we also have the chair of the planning commission here. I believe he would like to speak as well. So yeah, these were slides prepared by Mr. Harvey. I don't really have any commentary on them, so we'll just have to see if we can get them back.
Okay, well, this is in the packet.
It's in the packet. Let's take it out to public comment.
Okay, public comment. Please, please come forward if you'd like to speak on this issue. Welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll be brief. My name is Steve Lilly, and I'm here this evening as, in the capacity, as chair of the planning commission. A couple of weeks ago, the planning commission met and made a recommendation to return to the meeting in person, in chambers, meeting concept that we had before the pandemic. But in addition to have remote Zoom audience participation, so it would be a hybrid meeting, and they asked that I present that to you this evening. And the reasons, I think, are twofold. First, the Zoom approach, I think, has shown that increases participation from the audience. But the in-person, chamber meetings is also important for the board or the commission or the council, where we meet face to face and work as a team to resolve issues and make decisions. And that's going to be very important in the near term, because we're going to have to come up with a housing element and changes to our general plan and land use and safety and in transportation. It's going to be a lot of work in addition to the other activities we have. And so it's important that we return to the in-chamber, in-person meetings. And so with that, I would recommend that we pass on the recommendation that we return to that. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them. Thank you. And by the way, one other thing, thank you, Councilmember McAdams and Tomlinson for your service the last four years. So I think a lot of us appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Anyone on the, on Zoom wishing to speak to this item?
Yes, sir. We have one caller, Inga Lawrence and Deimer.
Welcome.
Well, my understanding was that the city manager told us that we were going to have all the boards and commissions have hybrid meetings as soon as some sort of training happened, which is, of course, a time uncertain. Now, I think for the planning commission to be the very first of this is incredibly important and is to happen yesterday, as far as I'm concerned. The planning commission is one of the most important and quasi judicial also boards, commissions that we have. And it is necessary to get back in chamber and, of course, have the Zoom, the hybrid, for the rest of us that are getting up there and have health concerns. And I just want to push that this timeline be moved forward, and that, of course, that it be televised on AMP also, as it was always done before COVID. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you. I certainly support hybrid meetings as soon as possible. And, and I think, as Inga said, yesterday would be good for, for planning commission. I think it's important for all of the boards and committees and commissions. And at most of the, the boards and commissions that I attend the meetings, they've commented on how the hybrid meetings, excuse me, I should say, the virtual meetings bring out much greater public participation. But at the same time, some people are not adept at, at computers. And, and for them, in person would be very, very important. So I think that hybrid meetings should be available as soon as possible for all the boards and commissions, then, but planning commission is certainly a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes virtual, I'm sorry, Jane Haynes.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to lend my support to this, too. The planning commission wants it. I think a lot of other people do. And I certainly want hybrid meetings as well. So I support this proposal.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No further hands, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council discussion, Councilmember Clitty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to echo pretty much just what everyone said during public comment, and kind of emphasize that we are in the midst of some of the most important zoning changes and housing element updates that the city will has faced in perhaps ever. And it's not trivial. This is, this is important work that has to be get done, and it's got to get done by December. So here we are. We've got maybe, you know, five, five months, you take vacations out, and we've got to retool our whole zoning code, housing element, and updates to our general plan. And we're doing it over Zoom. It's untenable. It's not going to work. So I think we have to get planning commission back in chambers ASAP. One of the callers said, like yesterday, and that is certainly true. So I would, I would like to see us just, I don't know if there's a recommendation in this particular agenda report, but give direction to staff that the next meetings for the planning commission must be hybrid, so they can get the work done that they advise us on. And this is, these are very important updates. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would ask the city attorney or city manager, when is the next planning commission meeting? Sorry, I don't, I don't know that. Is it in July? Have we had the July one already? Although it's only the sixth. It's next week?
Yeah, it's next week. We won't be, through, through, Councilmember Thompson, through the mayor, we will not be ready for a hybrid meeting for the planning commission next week.
So then the August would be the one you're targeting?
Right. And if I could, just, I think I've announced this, I put this in the city manager's report, we're actually on a path to train everybody. You know, the amazing thing about our city clerk is that she makes it look like it's really easy to make all this happen. And it's much more involved than just initiating a Zoom meeting, because there are cameras in here, and there's volume, and there's a control board. So it's very expensive, sophisticated equipment. We want to make sure all the staff liaisons understand how to not only operate it, but to make sure that they're recording correctly. We want to make sure that there's a proper script, so that people, you know, somebody's not available, they know the steps to take. And so that's all in motion, as I already put out in my report and updated. So we're moving towards that. Yes, we believe that we can have the training completed in July, so that meetings in August can happen. But we're not going to be able to do the next week planning commission meeting as a hybrid meeting.
Understood. And the August meeting is, if, let's say, things slide with your training, could we prioritize the planning commission for August and maybe even have it have some potential not perfect experience? And we would be, you know, willing to accept that?
Yes, but I don't anticipate that we're going to need that. But that, you know, I just always add a caveat when I throw something out like that, in the event there's something that we don't anticipate happening. But I think it's going to be fine.
Okay.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that that is a good reminder for the public, that there probably are going to be some hiccups. And, you know, the city clerk has had months and months and months of, you know, this finesse and really mastering these hybrid meetings. And so I would just appreciate if the public be kind and gentle to staff who are going to be new to, to this. So thank you.
I'll just add that the boards, commissions, and committees do not require council approval to hold a hybrid meeting or even an in-person meeting. Now, they went long ago now. Everybody went to, to virtual meetings because of state action. But currently, But currently, and the city attorney can help me out here, is we could meet in person. We don't, the, the boards, commissions, committees can meet in person now. But if they want to wait until hybrid, then they'll need to wait until the city manager has the proper resources in place.
When you passed the resolution under AB 361 earlier tonight, as you have, assuming for several meetings over the last number of months, and that authorizes you to have a remote meeting or a hybrid meeting or an in-person meeting. So that's the advantage. It gives you that flexibility, and that would apply to the council as well as to your boards.
So again, I'll just remind all the committees, this is up, this is up to you and a discussion with the city manager as to how you want to hold your meetings. It's not up to council. Okay. Anything, anything else? All right, we're now move on to item, the former item 12A, safe parking. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And Ms. Candell, whenever you can, if you can bring up the slides, that would be great. You could just go to the second slide. And so before us this evening is a conceptual discussion. In our Pacific Grove Municipal Code 18 dot 36 dot 050 would be to amend from a pilot program, our safe parking pilot program that we've had since 2016 to a permanent program and direct staff to return with draft language. In the next slide. So currently in chapter 18 dot 36, under motor vehicles, mobile homes, and mobile home parks, is the temporarily sleeping in a parked vehicle by permit only. And this is a pilot program that began in 2016. The pilot program that we have here in the city of Pacific Grove is managed by a service provider, meaning that the city is not managing the safe parking program. We're not incurring any cost. Really, the city's position is that it's in our municipal code and we issue the permit to the service provider. And the next slide. And so in the city of Pacific Grove, our service provider in partnership with Monterey County is One Starfish. They have another name, Orphan Productions. And they have successfully ran a safe parking program in the city of Pacific Grove. And the next slide, we do have ordinance examples that were included in your agenda packet. And that is from the city of Seaside and the city of Monterey. Oh, next slide, please. Oh, next one. Sorry, I think we're, there we go. And so the next slide, Sandra. So this evening, we can direct staff to return with draft language, establishing the safe parking program from a pilot to a permanent. I would also suggest that the ordinance be rebutted and cleaned up. Back in 2016, when the pilot program was established under the conditions, which is F like Frank, there's a lot of sort of unenforceable conditions, you know, like behave children, you know, things of that matter that I think when the pilot program was established, maybe it was a little fear based or there was a lot of unknown. But since it has been running successfully since 2016, I think there are some pretty detailed conditions that the service provider is actually managing. And we can also keep on going as a pilot program as since 2016. Or of course, we can provide other direction to staff. And I did meet with Jocelyn Francis and our city manager. And we just had a brief meeting to sort of talk about, you know, the ordinance. And actually, Ms. Francis was surprised that it was still a pilot program. So I do think that we can make it a permanent one. And also for the safety of the parking program guest, I would appreciate that we not identify the, the locations in the city of Pacific Grove. So thank you so much.
Do we have any public comment? Please come to the podium if you wish to speak. Seeing none for virtual audience, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, Marcia.
Welcome.
Marcia.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councillors. I hope you will vote to continue keeping the safe parking pilot program as is, that is non-permanent. There is no need to make safe parking a permanent program entrenched in the city's ordinances because this may invite activists to demand expansion in the future. And subsequently, city management in turn may want to hire more city staff to oversee a new quote unquote permanent program. The city cannot either afford new programs or new city staff hires. According to the most recent point in time survey taken by the city's housing manager, Pacific Grove has approximately 17 homeless individuals. The safe parking program as is without expansion can handle that number. Homelessness in Pacific Grove is a transitory situation. Other previous surveys taken by Monterey County as required by federal authorities describe Pacific Grove as a temporary spot for homeless individuals who tend to move on to larger cities like Salinas where they can access more taxpayer-supported services. Pacific Grove has a population of approximately 15,000 people. It is a very small city compared to Salinas, for example, with an approximate population of 163,500. I hope city council will agree that the non-permanent safe parking program should stay as is for the reasons I have cited. Thank you very much for listening to my concern.
Thank you. Mr. Lilly, please welcome.
My name is Steve Lilly. I just, I'm aware of who the provider is and in respect to Councilman McCambs, I won't identify them. But I would just make the observation that I hope that you would involve these people who have run this program very well and who liked the program that they run in, in redrafting the ordinance. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
No other virtual callers.
All right, council discussion on this item. Councilmember Padori.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman McAdams for bringing this. Like you, I'm surprised why a pilot is running for six years or plus. So there should be a date, end date to it and make it permanent. So I'm supportive. I just had a question around the licenses. Is the license by, by provider or is it by occupant? Is it, how do we determine? So there's a language in here saying the city council will issue all initial licenses. So is there a number? How do we classify that?
It is, and is Ms. Francis available to Mr. Harvey? Yeah, okay. It is issued to the service provider and underneath the license, they have a number of vehicles that can be parked underneath their license.
Okay, so it's, and it's not by parking spot. It's by provider?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Ms. Francis, please jump in.
Yeah, sure. So currently we have one site in the city that has a permit and they have five parking spaces that are designated for the safe sleeping program. So, so actually it was in 2015 that we started the pilot program. And we went to council to codify it in 2016. And I really think the word pilot is more of a grammatical error that we didn't catch when we codified it. But it's been successful since 2015 and it's helped dozens of women find permanent housing and, and jobs and schooling in the area. So it's a great, great program.
And thank you, and I appreciate the detail too. And housing is, is a crisis. And I think we need to do whatever we can to help Pacific Grove and its residents, whoever are out on the streets now, to live safely. So I am completely supportive. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Melio.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm supportive also. It sounds to me, Jocelyn, that the ordinance, just the main pilot needs to be removed from it. Am I correct on that?
I can't speak for Councilmember McAdams. I believe there's other changes that she wants to make. But yeah, unfortunately, a first read and a second read, nobody caught that the word pilot was still in the ordinance. So it still reads that way, but we've been treating it as a permanent program as far as issuing permits and whatnot.
Okay, the, the other comment I have to make is, and I, I haven't read the ordinance. Maybe Councilmember McAdams has it in here, but maybe Mrs. Francis can explain this to me. Am I correct, according to some of the other ordinances from the city of Monterey and Seaside, that they only allow parking in municipal parking lots? I, I understand. Maybe you could explain, is someone who needs to park, can they park in a residential area?
Sure. So right now we issue them to a site. So one of the current sites is a church. So as Councilmember McAdams mentioned earlier, they work with the One Starfish program in providing services and kind of rules to live by while they're utilizing their property. Currently, right now, we do not utilize any city public facilities or roadways in Pacific Grove.
Okay, and no parking lots where businesses are located. Am I correct on that?
No, we just have the one-site permit that's located at a church.
Okay, thank you. And I'm supportive of the program.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember McAdams. I'm also supportive of the program. Jocelyn, I just had a question about, so the, the permits are issued by the city and there's one permit out that is operating at this site. If another operator or if the same operator wanted to pull another permit, is that something that comes before council to approve? How many sites could our city have? If this became more popular and we found other locations to, to do this? And, and would each permit that's being issued become before council or just before city staff?
Sure. So when it was approved, basically right now the permits go to me for approval. Once it, once it had been approved by city council. So annually, the site resubmits their application for approval for a safe parking program or safe sleeping program. In our current code, it allows for seven parking spaces. The current site has five of those seven. So if another site wanted to come in, they could get up to two, they'd be approved up to two parking spaces in their facility. Or as you made reference, the current site holder could come and, and get all seven if, if they, if they wanted, the way it stands right now.
Okay, great. And that makes sense. I'm glad that you have that approval authority delegated. I guess I was just trying to get to know what the maximum was, and it sounds like seven is the number. So thank you. I'm supportive of taking the word pilot out and probably, you know, we'll, we'll have the ordinance come back to us if there's any other changes that, that are real logical. And, and I do agree with Mr. Lilly's comment that let's involve the provider in, in having them do at least a once over and, and give us any best practices since they live and breathe this operation. But it's a great, great thing to know about. Thank you.
Councilmember Cluddy.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I support this program. I think it's great. And it sounds like we regulate based on number of spaces. Is that correct? Have, are we, have we ever gotten to the point where we are oversubscribed? Or have people come in and wanted to locate a site, but we weren't able because the number of spaces has already been allocated?
Sure. Since we started the program, the pilot program in 2015, to my knowledge, that's been brought to my attention, there's only been the one site that currently has a permit that has been interested in participating in the program. And they've never gone over requesting more than five parking spaces. So we've always had those two permits that would, you know, that are available currently for, for any additional sites that are interested in the program.
Thank you, Jocelyn, for clarifying. I'm all for cleaning up ordinances where they need to be cleaned up. But it sounds to me like we've got a great program that's running well. So I, I'm not, I don't think we need to do any further expansion or any modifications other than just kind of some code cleanup. That's where I'd like to go. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, I don't want to have cumulative comments here, but I, hard to avoid. But I agree that with Councilmember Coletti that we just need a little code cleanup on this. And we all seem to be in favor of keeping the program indefinitely and just clean it up. Thank you.
I'll ask, Mr. Harvey, I'm hearing great council support. Do you need any further feedback on this particular item?
I don't think so, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Francis, is there anything that you're unclear about?
No.
Thank you.
All right, it's just about eight o'clock when we normally take a break. So let's take a break and please return promptly at eight o'clock, straight up. Thank you. Let's resume with the special meeting, the agenda item, Claudia Tibbs' appointment to BNRC. She's well qualified to be on the BNRC, and I believe she, Ms. Tibbs, is the Sustainability Manager for the Monterey Bay Aquarium. And of course, a resident of Pacific Grove. Do we have any comments from the public on this appointment? Please come to the podium if you have any comments. Do we have any comments from the virtual audience?
We do, Mayor. Lisa Chiani.
Welcome.
I just want to say it's very exciting to see that that someone with Ms. Tibbs' experience and skills is is interested in serving on our BNRC. It's a wonderful group, as it is the the members who are on there. And and I think she'll just be a great addition. I've I've seen her at beach cleanups and things. Oh, and at Monterey Island meeting. So she she just has a lot of interest in all things natural. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, sir.
All right. Close public comment. Councilmember Cliddy.
I'd like to move to approve the mayor's nomination or appointment. Second.
Discussion on the motion. May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Cliddy.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio.
Aye.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Councilmembers Padiri.
Aye.
Tomlinson.
Aye.
McAdams.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Now adjourn the special meeting and we'll return to the regular meeting. Item 12B, cannabis advisory ballot measure and cannabis tax ballot measure. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask the city clerk to please bring up a PowerPoint presentation for me. So I had the opportunity to meet with our city attorney earlier today, and thank you. That's why this is coming to you so so fast and so sudden, but I do have a couple city attorney recommended changes to this item. Just for reference, council in April directed staff to bring this forward. The idea is two ballot measures at the November ballot. One is an advisory ballot measure if the city would like to have one dispensary in town and one if if that is something that city wants, whether there could be a tax on on cannabis and hemp, both in store and delivery. Next slide, please. So the city attorney has taken a look at both measures and has recommended some some minor modifications. And the first one is to the tax measure, and you can see that in front of you, and we're just simply replacing the word directed to authorize. And Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, the reason for that change is this is an advisory measure, and it shouldn't be directing the council to do something, because then it wouldn't be advisory, it would be mandatory. So the word authorized, I'm suggesting that we use that word instead. So that would allow you to amend your code if you chose to do so.
Thank you very much. Next slide. The next change is to the language for the tax measure. As council knows, the tax measure is implemented through an ordinance, which will be included within the ballot material. And so the city attorney has pointed out that the language in the question needs to reference that ordinance. And so that's what we're doing here. We're adding an ordinance be adopted establishing a city excise tax. So I wanted to call those. Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, thank you. The city manager has correctly observed that it does need to be an ordinance, which is why I recommended that language. And then also, if you look at the tail end of that tax measure on the slide, the prior version had said that it would be levied until repealed by the voters or the city council. And legally, the city council can't be repealing something that's been approved by the voters. It can only be repealed by the voters. So I'm recommending that we strike the language or the city council.
Thank you very much. And we've already talked about the ordinance that would accompany the ballot material. If I could go to the next slide. The other item that will come along is, of course, the map. This establishes the buffer zones, and apologies for the granularity and the impossibility to read this. But this same item is included within the agenda packet. For anybody watching, you can grab it online and see a much more easy to see version of it. This will also be the advisory measure. So I don't have anything additional to tell the council this evening. Appreciate the city attorney working with me earlier today. And with that, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Welcome.
I'm on your planning commission, but I'm talking just as a as a resident. As a resident, I'm glad you're seeking our opinion about cannabis. It's it's makes us feel we have you care what we what we think. But this advisory vote is kind of peculiar, and I think in some ways it's misleading to the public. You have a map in there with a thousand-foot buffer, and you say there's you're only talking about one dispensary. But the matter of, but this is just advisory. So it seems to me that this council or future councils, no matter what this vote is, could have multiple dispensaries, could have a thousand-foot buffer or a 600-foot buffer or no buffer. And and I guess, you know, that's an observation, and if if I'm wrong, you know, I should be corrected. But I hope somehow you you let the voters know that this literally is is just advisory, and this council or future councils doesn't have to pay any attention to these these details that are in the ballot measure. And and in fact, if people vote not to have a dispensary, you know, this council or future council could do one in, you know, and vice and vice versa. And that's that's a funny kind of vote. So it's just an observation, and if anything I've said is not correct, I hope the city manager or city attorney would correct me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from on Zoom wishing to speak to this item?
Yes, sir. Marsha.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. In my opinion, city council should require that city management, in consultation with an addiction medicine specialist, write arguments against the proposed ballot measures on cannabis. Because Pagrovian taxpayers are paying for the two cannabis ballot measures to appear on the ballot and also for HDL consultant work. So taxpayers should learn not just the pros, but also the cons of this complex issue, which includes serious medical impacts. Management has been working with and paying a consultant from a firm that is pro cannabis. And if Pagrovians are paying for HDL's business consultant, surely the city council can find money to pay an honorarium for a medical specialist in addiction medicine like Dr. Kenneth Finn, M.D., who practices medicine in Colorado. He's been there, done that, so to speak, with cannabis retail stores and impacts on youth in particular. Dr. Finn is Vice President- Dr. Finn is vice president of a medical organization called the International Academy on the Science and Impact of Cannabis. For more information about Dr. Finn, MD and his organization. You can go to the IASIC website and which also has an archive of medical articles. Changing the city's existing ordinance that forbids cannabis retail stores. Stores in the city's jurisdiction is more than just about sales tax revenues. Though even sales tax revenues are questionable because retail profits from retail cannabis stores have nosedived. Due to oversaturation in the market. Permitting cannabis retail in Pacific Grove involves significant medical issues. Some youth in particular are at risk for developing psychosis from protracted marijuana use. And there is no question that youth do get their hands on weed. Because once the city promotes a change in the existing ordinance. A market is created not only for legal cannabis, but for illegal cannabis to be sold in our jurisdiction. Even in the case of marijuana sold secondhand from a dispensary. An unscrupulous dealer may contaminate it with extremely dangerous substances like fentanyl. Which is a nationwide health crisis and has already caused tragedies right here in Pacific Grove. I refer to Carmel Pinecone article dated March 11th, 2022. With comments from Dr. Casey Grober, an ER specialist at CHOP. Noting the potential contamination issue. I hope city council will seriously take my concerns and my recommendation for requiring city management. To write arguments against the proposed ballot measures on cannabis. In consultation with an addiction medicine specialist like Dr. Kenneth Finn, MD. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tina?
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the callers who call in with these red herrings. But let's be clear, we're talking about legalized, regulated, measured dispensing of cannabis. We are not talking about guys selling it out of the back of their car. We're not talking about it being laced with fentanyl. And I think legalizing cannabis in Pacific Grove actually helps keep these. Undesired products out of our kids' hands. You have to be, you have to go through two security checkpoints. You have to provide an ID and be registered. This isn't some fly by night situation. And we don't have to look to Colorado or anywhere else to find to find case studies. There is already legalized cannabis in Carmel, in Seaside, and soon to be in Monterey. And you don't find massive overdoses or or crime ridden streets. In fact, I'd say that Seaside probably looks better today than it has in the last 20 years. So I think that this measure should go forward. I think we should put it to the voters. But I don't think that we should include a bunch of red herrings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Debbie Beck?
Welcome.
Debbie Beck?
Good evening, council. I have to agree with the previous caller, not the previous, but Marsha, who called in regarding the opposition. And I I do believe since we are paying city taxpayer money for this ballot. Item that we do have the pro and con to it as well. You know, for myself, the tens of thousands of dollars that I spent as a taxpayer for the referendum. So again, if we're spending taxpayer money, I would hope that the city manager would have both sides to this item on the ballot. And not just favorable. And again, I think there are numbers that are being thrown around that are inaccurate. As far as tax dollars being received to the city. And this is not about, you know, legalizing, non-legalizing, what communities allow it, which communities don't allow it. It is about process and it is about using taxpayer money to put something on the ballot. So I think if we're going to spend the money, I think we need to be very transparent. And and give both sides of this position. And I don't think as a community member that I need to be the one presenting that, even though I've been asked to do that. So please look into that and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes virtual public comment.
Right, council discussion on this particular item. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question and then I'll sort of comment later after my colleagues. But with regards to the opposition on the ballot, anybody can file that. Is that isn't that correct? There's a certain time and you can file your opposition. It's not the city's responsibility to file the opposition.
I'd like to actually defer, the city clerk knows the specifics, but you're you're largely correct as far as I understand. And Ms. City Clerk, can you describe the process for that, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Through the mayor. Councilmember McAdams, there are, I believe they are all outlined in the resolution as well when arguments are due. And so, yes, those are can be filed by any member of the public.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And then in the agenda packet regarding the the subject matter expert. The agenda's report does state that the city manager would use the spending authority for the HDL. But then also in the agenda report from June 16th, 2021. That agenda report also stated that HDL would be hired as a subject matter via the city manager spending authority. So do we know how much we have already paid HDL for the topic of cannabis?
Councilmember McAdams, through the mayor, I don't have that number off the top of my head. We can certainly run that report. They, yeah, we we just there were different efforts, of course, but we could definitely come up with a number for that. Sure.
Okay, perfect. I would just want to make sure that we're not, you know, engaging them twice and then, you know, using up to 80,000 or whatever the. I don't want to be going over that spending authority.
And if I could on that question, Councilmember McAdams. This recent effort was through, obviously, a separate new contract. It's actually going through the DocuSign process currently. And I think the amount was, I want to say 15, no, not to exceed $15,000, but there's no need to spend up to that either.
Okay, perfect. And so those were my questions and I just will have some comments later. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thanks. I don't, I there was a question raised earlier that I actually want to just confirm that the answer is no. If if this were to pass as presented tonight with with the amendments. Would that give a later council the ability to? Create more than one cannabis retail storefront? I guess that's directed to the city attorney.
So the the answer is yes, if the measure is passed. It does provide that you could, you know, if it's an advisory measure. You 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 could either authorize a cannabis facility or or more than one.
But the language of our actual ballot measure says no more than one. Ennoble the location of no more than one cannabis retail storefront. So does it matter?
Well, I didn't say it to be a good idea. You you asked me what the law was. So the advisory measure is by its nature. The word that gives it away is advisory. So you would then, you know, be receiving input from your community as to what their desires are. And, you know, you might want to pay attention to that. But since it is advisory, it's not mandatory.
Okay, one more question then. And so if it basically essentially what this is doing is just advising. The council on via the voters that the council has the ability to. Enable a location of a cannabis storefront.
Well, I think what it is, is you're seeking input from the community with respect to their interest in whether or not. They want you to consider taking that action or not. So it's an opportunity to get public input in a in a formal voting way.
Thank you very much.
Rather than, for example, a poll of some sort.
Okay, thank you.
Or survey or.
Great.
Councilmember Pedori? Yeah, I have a question around the the buffers on map. So will that actually go on to the ballot?
Yes, it will, Councilmember Pedori.
Okay, thank you. To me, this is where we've already gone through this, I would say in depth. And at the end of the day, this is a matter of convenience. We're bringing in what is required for possibly folks that are already using cannabis in town to town. So that's the intent and it is being going to be decided by by the voters one way or the other. So I'm okay with moving forward with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Your Honor. I. An advisory vote, as has been mentioned by the city attorney, is advisory. But it also brings some finality to the question. And the referendum process that we, you know, we were involved with two years ago. Was meant to do the same thing. So when you do have a vote, and it is the ultimate poll in the end. When you do have a vote, the community will have an opportunity to voice what their will is. And I say a woe to any city council member who doesn't listen. That's why the constitution allows recalls. So I I think it it kind of puts finality to the question. And then allows us to proceed. So if the advisory vote is yes, then or, you know, whatever it'll be. Assuming it is yes, then we proceed through the planning commission, through SEQA process of developing an ordinance. That allows us to permit, under the guidelines provided in the advisory vote, a single cannabis. A single cannabis site with these other provisions, a thousand foot radius, et cetera. So I think it gives us by it gets the community to tell us what they want to see the ordinance looking like. And it would be a bad idea not to listen, at least on this item. I did hear some, speaking of red herrings, I did hear someone mention that Carmel allows cannabis. That's actually not true. She they might be thinking of the community or the the county. And also, it's pretty clear in the resolutions. That anyone from the community can submit arguments for or against either the advisory vote or the tax measure itself. There is a set of, there is a precedent. Council members get higher precedence. But if no one from council submits an argument, then it goes into. And there are multiple people who apply, then it goes into a hat and I believe the city clerk chooses one. I believe that's what's provided in statute. So feel free, if you have some comment or some argument you want to make. And if you need any advice on how to draft an argument either for or against, I've done a few. And I'm willing to give guidance where needed. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for preparing this and the city attorneys and all that have have gone into this. The I support the recommendation. I know in the four years I've been here cannabis has continually come up. We've done our best to to try to push it forward and, you know, and then it kind of went backwards and forwards and backwards and forwards. And I won't rehash the whole thing, but ultimately always what was at the core of our minds was what do the people of this community want? And in lieu of doing a poll where we don't get everybody, as many folks participating, we're we're taking it to the voters. It's something I I really think is the right move. And so I support us doing that. I fully understand that it, you know, from a legal perspective, that it's just a it's just a vote. And and it doesn't mean that we're having a cannabis shop. It doesn't mean that the location is picked. I mean, there will be a lot of work to do. And I believe or I agree with what some members of the public said. That even the the things in the advisory write-up about the buffer zones and such can be massaged. And improved upon as that process takes place if need be. So I'm very happy that we're going to have this, or I'm happy to support having it go to the voters. Mr. Harvey? I guess not me to call on you, but if you have something based on my comments, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, is it is it is okay for me to make a comment?
Yeah, I should call on you.
I I just wanted to point out that this is being brought forward at council direction. And I I think I meant abundantly clear to me, but this is not an initiative that I'm pushing forward on my own authority. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. There was a few of us that were on the subcommittee and we agreed to try to push this forward to a general election. But after I saw what happened with the primary election with all the issues that are involved. I did a little bit more research. I personally think this should be in a special election, including a future agenda item that's coming up. But should be a special election. Let me just go through a couple of things that are going to be on the general election. There'll be US Senator, US Representatives for District 18, 19, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Secretary of State, Controller, Treasurer, Attorney General. Insurance Commissioner, State Superintendent Public Instruction, County Board of Supervisors, District 2 and District 3. Superior Court Judge, accessory county clerk, auditor, district attorney, sheriff, treasurer, superintendent of school. Monterey County trustee, Area 1. And on top of that, we're going to have propositions. And the propositions are abortion, constitutional language, sport betting on tribal lands, allowing online betting. Arts and music funding, K-12, kidney dialysis rule reforms, wealth tax to support clean air programs. And overturn the tobacco industry. Right now, there has been $325 million spent on this, on these campaigns. That's why I'm advocating that we bring this to a special election. Because if this gets buried along with all the city council candidates that'll be running, including the mayor, mayors. I just think this, I'm all for bringing this to the vote, but it needs to be on a special agenda. It needs to be a special election similar to our tax because there's a tremendous amount of information that's going out on the general. You have to read that thing and then suddenly we're buried all the way to the end. We put that on and plus we have another agenda item coming up. So that's where my vote is. It has to be on a special election.
Okay, um. I've got a few items here, not very many. First of all, for the tax measure, has CDTFA reviewed the ballot language?
No, they have not.
And will they?
Yes, we can certainly submit it to CDTFA.
Well, I, considering what happened with Measure L, I I would greatly suggest. We send this language off to them just as soon as possible.
All yes, and I just want to assure the council that we have a city attorney who's looking closely at all the language.
Okay. I'd like to add in, I had the same question as Councilmember Pedori about a cannabis map. I didn't see this explicit in the resolution. I would suggest that we make it explicit. I was looking at page 92 of the packet. Let's see. Can we add it in that paragraph that says be it further resolved and ordered that the city council directs the city clerk and so forth? Can we? Can we put it in there that cannabis map is part of the sample ballot? I think that's a critical piece of information. I think that's a critical piece of information. But obviously I'm, I'm just looking for the end result, not trying to.
That might be a, did, do you look in my direction? Did you want me to respond on that or?
Yeah, if, yes.
That might be a decision by the county, um, in terms of what would go into the sample ballot. So it might be subject to their approval as to whether or not that's, because the, the county runs your elections. Is that right? Yeah. Okay. So I'm thinking that, um, that may or may not be something that they would incorporate into their, into their.
Okay. So maybe, um, we could just put it in here that we request the Monterey County Elections Department register voters to include the map. I could probably shrink it down to half a page.
Yeah, like if, if possible, or, you know, if.
Yeah, could we put, could we put that? Anyhow, that's my request. I, I see I've got some support from one council member on that, uh, particular item. Um, okay, um, on page ninety-six, it says to fund general municipal expenses such as police, fire, roads and recreation. Should we add the phrase and for unrestricted general revenue purposes? Just to make it abundantly clear that this is not restricted to police, fire, roads and recreation. And yeah, that's my recommendation. Add the phrase and for unrestricted general revenue purposes. That's on page ninety-six. That's the ballot question, just to add that phrase. It's in section four ballot question. What's that? Counsel, any comments on that?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I do want to find out, um, is there a limit to the words here?
Yes, that was my, thank you. That was my question. So I just need to count that up and make sure. I think it's a seventy-five word limit. I believe the city clerk, clerk will correct me on that. We just want to make sure that we're within that.
Right. Well, then, um, good point. So let's, let's have our city attorney take a look at it and make sure we've got some, um, a very unambiguous language that this is unrestricted, uh, uh, revenue. That would be my suggestion. And, uh, next one, uh, looking at the, the ballot question again on page ninety-six. So I'm, I didn't see, um, a, uh, material justifying the four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. So I looked around for data. You know, I'm, we can argue and you can build cases for low numbers and high numbers. But I just, I wanted the data from what are, um, local cannabis retail shops paying in taxes? And so Councilmember Pedori very nicely provided us a chart on April twentieth. And it said one point three million from Seaside in annual tax revenue, one point three million. And Seaside has six, uh, retail cannabis shops and a six percent retail. So one point three million divided by six, someone check my math, two hundred and seven, sixteen thousand dollars. Two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars from Seaside, the average. And I was told that one store is doing very well. So obviously others are not doing that well. And then, um, the other data point I got from, uh, was from HDL. And, um, David McPherson did a report for Monterey last year, twenty twenty-one on cannabis. And in that report, it said current cannabis coastal cannabis store gross receipts average four million dollars. So do the math, six percent of four million dollars a year is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So there's two data points, two hundred and sixteen and two hundred and forty. Maybe let's look at the high side, go up to three hundred thousand. I would like to under-promise and over-deliver on this one. Um, I think, like I said, I, I can't support this four hundred to six hundred. Let's change it to two hundred to three hundred. Make it simple. Comments on that, Councilmember Pedori?
Yeah, I, I would say we're, we're saying that, I mean, we can just, we don't have to give a range, right? I mean, I mean, who knows where it's going to land. So it's an estimate at the end of the day. So I'm, I'm okay with the figure like saying, but, uh, which is expected to generate an estimated three hundred thousand in revenue and, and be done with it. Uh, there, there's no necessity for a range, frankly.
Yeah. Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and I absolutely would support either not having a range or just, just saying tax revenue without giving a number or, or doing a low number because I, I don't want to mislead the voters. I don't want to leave any room for, uh, you know, a negative comment later, or, you know, you said this and it's on my ballot and it didn't happen. So, I, just some general comments, I absolutely am in support of bringing this to the voters. Thank you to the subcommittee, uh, for your work. I really appreciate that this council, you know, made that decision to ensure that we redid the process. We listened to the community, um, and we did make this, uh, a more transparent process. And I think that that is a excellent example of good governance and, and I'm proud to be a part of this council that did that. I've always, I wholeheartedly agree to let the voters and our community decide, um, if having a cannabis dispensary uh, is a path for our city and community. And, um, I have been, you know, banging the bell with regards to delivery. So I did see within the resolution that there are, there is, um, language there with regards to transactions in and out of the city. So I just wanted to confirm, does that cover delivery transactions? It's actually highlighted in yellow too. I can find it. Oh, and then one comment about the map, uh, the voter guide may not be in color. So I would do, uh, you could tweak the map so it's black and white print for friendly. That's just, uh, I don't think it's colored at all. So that would be, uh, helpful. So anyways, just back to my question with regards to delivery. Hold on, I'm trying to find it. I closed it out.
Well, did you want me to volunteer an answer to that?
Yes, thank you.
It's, um, in the measure. Do you have that PowerPoint?
The one that. Say, could you, could you bring that up one more time for us? Sandra, please. And Mr. City Attorney, you want to go to the second ballot question, this one?
See, hmm, no, go to the, go to the tax one.
Advisory measure?
Yeah. Um, so it says, if this is your question, would it apply to delivery? The answer is yes. Cause it says it. So that's kind of a clue. Um, I, I would say also that, um, while we've got that up, perhaps the city clerk, uh, to, to respond to the mayor's question, um, about, uh, adding the language, uh, and for, um, unrestricted general, uh, revenue purposes, um, I think that would fit in, um, after recreation. So on the first line where it says roads and recreation, um, we changed slides here. Uh, after the word recreation, we would add the words and for unrestricted general purposes. And then maybe the city clerk, um, while there's other questions going on, could do a word count and see if we are at, uh, seventy-five words or less with those added words.
And then reducing the, the range of revenue, projected revenue. You could get to.
Yeah, I hadn't heard if there was consensus of the council on that.
No, we're waiting on a further council input on that.
So thank you. Thank you so much for, for confirming that. Um, I think that, you know, we already have, uh, delivery happening in our city, uh, quite a lot of it. And it's important that we capture, um, that revenue. Um, and then I do agree to either perhaps eliminate the estimated annual income or just put tax revenue, uh, and not have a, a speculative number. So, uh, that's it. Thank you.
And if I could just add, um, I've seen that the city clerk has added some text would be for unrestricted general revenue purposes. After the word unrestricted, um, there you go. So now we'll need to do a word count.
Okay, but we're going to talk, we're going to talk about, I think, uh, the revenue, uh, question, I think. Any council comments on just the revenue for now? Councilmember Tomlinson?
I don't think you need the word purposes. Uh, I, I think, but over to you. The, the four hundred to six, I, I agree. I don't have a solution for the range, but just by, if, if, I heard transpire here is that there's eight cannabis operations in Seaside and they make one point three million and we're going to divide that, or six and divided by six to get our number. But yet one of those stores is the, you know, big elephant in the room. He, that means maybe one store is making a million, you know, and so you could argue for a higher side, although I actually think that cannabis is not going in that direction. So I'm not going to make that argument. So it just proves the point that putting a range in there is extremely speculative. So, um, it, the question is, is it important to the voters to see a number or can we just say, uh, expected to generate estimated additional revenue annually and, and keep it vague?
Councilmember Smith.
I'm okay with three hundred.
And I, I'll add, I'm okay with three hundred too. And I, there are a lot of people out there that that number is important. I think we need to set some expectation. And I'm, I could live with three hundred. So, um, Mayor Protem, uh, Emilio.
Thank you. Thank Mayor. Um, so it seems like, um, this tax measure is sort of a moving target, uh, as we're changing things around. And, and then it says, uh, action is requested to be taken no later than the council meeting, July twentieth meeting. Is that right, Mr. Harvey? That's what it says there. By the July twentieth, is that our next meeting? No, it isn't.
Sorry, Councilmember Amelia, the question, Mayor Protem Amelia, the question is when we need to act?
Well, yeah, do we have to act by July twentieth?
We, we are running close, uh, and I, I'm going to ask the city clerk to jump on the line. We, she has a calendar. Uh, Ms. City Clerk, could you tell us our deadlines with Monterey County again, please?
Let me pull that up. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm doing some research on my end. And, um, let me pull up my calendar very quickly.
I can tell you what we learned when we contacted the county, um, if you want to hear it. We, we were told, um, the deadline was August twelfth. And, uh, I think the logic for considering it this evening, uh, would be that, uh, you can submit the measure to the county and if for some reason the county had an issue with it, then you would have an opportunity at your meeting on July twentieth. And, and if even necessary, August third, to correct whatever it is that the county sees in the measure that, that there, uh, is unacceptable to them. So using that logic, if for some reason you didn't want to take action tonight, you could bring it back on the twentieth. That would still give time to submit it to the county. And if the county had an issue, you could come back at your meeting on August third. So that's the timeline that I was, that we were told when we checked with the county.
Mayor, could I follow up?
Yes. Then, thank you. Um, I'm just thinking, bringing this back, since it seems to be kind of a moving target, the text measure and seem to be changing some words is maybe to come back on July twentieth with a cleaned up version of this, rather than trying to do it, uh, sort of on the fly. Of words, I think it just needs to come back July twentieth. That's my thoughts.
That's Member Coletti. Thank you, Your Honor. I, I agree with, uh, uh, Mayor Protem. I, it, and it's not that we're making a lot of changes here. I don't feel like we are. I think it's, it's what we should be doing actually. But the points you've raised, Mayor, about taking this to the CD TFA are, that point did not go unnoticed. So I, uh, I think that's kind of like, we just have to do that. Um, probably should have happened earlier. And then we can check in with them and then check in with county elections on what the format of the map was, should be. So that gives us two weeks to get responses from the state. And then two weeks to get a response from the elections department on how they want to see a map. I don't think, I've seen, I don't think it's going to be a problem to include it in the voter guide, but we should know the format.
Okay, I'm, um, hearing something of a consensus for three hundred thousand as far as estimated. But I want to nail that one down because we are, this is a cleanup, right? So, um, okay, um, I want to, um, I'll move on to a topic we've already touched on, but we haven't really landed on. And that is the, the arguments. Um, so we've got two sets, two, we're talking about two ballot measures. So we've got two arguments and um, there is a procedure in, well, first of all, there, there is a procedure, but not in the uh, resolutions for submittal of arguments. But I believe in these particular resolutions, there's not a priority or hierarchy of how they are selected. Um, and, uh, older resolutions, I think it just said, city clerk will decide who it is. Um, yeah, a little bit of, uh, research earlier today. In our municipal code for rebuttal arguments, there is a very definite procedure for selecting the arguments, uh, the rebuttal arguments. But I couldn't find the, you know, arguments for and against procedure. So, um, I'm, I'm assuming the city clerk, you're familiar with the rebuttal, um, priority. Perhaps you could put that on the screen? Or has, has there anything I had said? Is it, the resolutions don't contain priority of, of who writes the arguments for and against? Okay, all, and, um, who gets, uh, first shot at it? Council is set. I'm looking at our city attorney putting him on.
Code section memorized. I, I do know that the elections code sets forth the system for determining the arguments. And I believe what I'm looking at on page ninety-two, um, in the, uh, second resolved paragraph, it says be it further resolved, the city council authorizes the city council or any member of the city council. So you do have, by this, the resolved paragraph, you're designating the city council, um, would be authorized. But it, I would defer to the elections code on that.
Okay, um, perhaps testing everyone's patience a bit. Who would like, and for the advisory, um, measure, who would like to write the argument for? Could I see a?
I have a suggestion.
Volunteer, go ahead.
Might be of help. Um, since this is coming back to you on the twentieth, maybe that's something that, um, could be, um, thought about in the next couple of weeks, along with some of these other issues. But if you wanted to address it tonight, you can certainly do that.
What's your, what's your pleasure? Councilmember Thompson?
I have a question. Is, is the argument for need to be drafted and wordsmithed and finalized as it, by the date of August, whatever you said earlier, seventh, fourteenth?
No.
That, I think we'd asked, maybe the city clerk would know about that.
What's the due date for the arguments, uh, Ms. Kendall?
I, I can pull that up really quickly. The, um, it's not the twelfth. That's just the deadline to file the measures with the elections department.
And would city council write the measure?
And would city council write the measure or the argument against as well?
That's what, that's what I'm talking about is trying to assess who wants to volunteer for doing this because I believe there can be up to five names on, on an argument and so potentially five people can, can write. I'll look for our city attorney, any words of wisdom?
What, what I've seen is that you'll have one or two council members will be designated, if you're going to have more than if you're going to have all five of you sign it, it should probably come back to you at a council meeting. And you can't offline have a conversation among the five of you on that. So you could have, you know, designate one or two council members who draft it and then present it as an agenda item and you can discuss it and wordsmith it as you choose.
Okay, and it sounds like we, we have time if the deadline is August eighteenth to hash, hash that out. Councilmember Coletti, you had something else?
Well, we don't have to. I mean, it's our prerogative. We can authorize that council does that and then, then even authorize someone to do it on council. Maybe we just leave this up to the public. No?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking council if there's an interest in writing.
My vote is, okay, I understand that. My vote is no, we don't, my vote is to leave it to the public.
If you're not interested, then, okay. Yeah, Councilmember Pedori.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to volunteer for the four argument. I also want to check in with Sandra. Sandra, could you confirm the date, please? Is it August twelfth or August eighteenth for us to get all, all of this in order? Advisory measure.
Yes, through the mayor, council member, that the twelfth is the last day to file these measures with the Elections Department. We don't want to wait until that last time because as the city attorney said, if there are any inaccuracies, we'll need to bring it back to council for correction. The primary arguments are due August thirteenth through the eighteenth on local ballot measures.
And the arguments for the benefit of the council, do the arguments have, have a word limit to?
Primary arguments, I believe, are three hundred words. I think that's outlined in the resolution as well. And then rebuttal arguments are limited to two hundred fifty words.
Okay, thank you. I, I believe that, I mean, I, a month can pass really fast, so my, my suggestion is from a, from a council perspective, seems like there's just like minor tweaking to the language. We can technically finish that up tonight and run it by CDA, DFA, or county, or whoever it is so that we're, we're, we're in a position on July twentieth to finalize this. So. But I'm, I'm volunteering for the four though.
Let me just ask clarification. The, the four arguments, there's two cannabis ballot measures. I'm assuming you write the four for, you're volunteering to write the four for both of them?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Pedori. If you need help, I will help you. The, I, I agree, though, that, that I think there was enough input tonight to make those changes. Run it by the two agencies so that when we come back on the twentieth, let's not come back the twentieth. We look at it and then go show it to the Elections Committee and CDTFA. I'd like those two checks to happen between now and the twentieth if possible. So that when, on the twentieth, when we're looking over this final version, we know that any changes that or inputs they have have already been addressed and dealt with and we can talk about them on the twentieth. And I, I can go with three hundred thousand.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm happy, Councilmember Pedori, to also sign as a supporter. And yes, I, I'm good with three hundred thousand.
Okay, so we, we have already three volunteers for the four cannabis argument. And if anyone wants to volunteer now for against, if not, we'll talk about that or we can just leave it. We don't have to even write in an argument against.
You don't want to be having three council members talking about this outside of a meeting, so my suggestion is to be one or two, not three. Two's okay. You know, I should learn how to count. All right, go ahead and after, go ahead.
All right, well, this is just to get this, get people thinking about it and, and moving forward on it. So I mean, nothing's written in stone here today, but I appreciate you entertaining the, the question. Anything else? I, I think we've covered all the items. Councilmember Pedori.
Sorry, for my benefit, right? I, I've not seen this kind of like a map on a ballot before. Does that increase the cost? I mean, is, is that like? If you have a one pager, are they going to like increase the cost? I mean, are we limited by size to make it a quarter of a page? How, how does that work?
Councilmember Pedori, through the mayor, that'll be one of the questions we ask. I don't, I won't have an answer for you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I'll just say, my experience listening to that kind of questions in the past is it's a mysterious process that the Elections Department uses to assess what cost they're going to give us, so. Okay. Mr. Harvey, do you need any further feedback?
No, but perhaps, thank you, Mayor, just for clarification, I want to just share some of the notes I have. This is coming back on the twentieth. We've, we've got some language changes, which I think the city clerk has thankfully captured. We have a estimate, revenue estimate change. We're going to be consulting with Monterey County. Situation with the map, you know, is it allowed? What are the colors? What are the limitations? What are the costs, et cetera? And I'm going to ask the city attorney's office to run things through CDTFA. Did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
We're going to have some council members think about arguments. Okay. All right, moving on to item twelve C, Pacific Grove City Charter Amendment. Mr. Harvey?
I'm just going to speak on this briefly because, as you know, from the errata, there have been multiple changes to this item and the city attorney has penned them. And so Mr. Pirik has graciously agreed to speak to this and I thank him for that.
Well, let me begin by saying that Councilmember Coletti was largely responsible for providing the majority of these suggested changes, which I reviewed with my assistant, Greg Rubens, and we've incorporated those suggested changes. We think they were helpful to the process and we made a few additional changes as well. So having said that, I think the primary issue to start with is the fact that the purpose of, primary purpose of the proposed charter amendment would be to reduce the number of council members from six to four, which would happen over a series of time as indicated under the recommendation. I'm on page one nineteen of your packet. So you'd be adopting a resolution that would be submitting a ballot measure to amend the charter to change the number of city council members from six to four, and then there's a number of steps here. Number one, that in twenty twenty-four, two city council members will, would be elected to four-year terms and one council member would be elected to a single two-year term. And then secondly, every two years thereafter, beginning in twenty twenty-six, two council members would be elected to four-year terms instead of your current practice, which is three being elected. So you would reduce it from three to two. So that's how you would get from point A to point B. Now, once you reduce from six council members and, and a mayor to four council members and a mayor, then that triggers other changes that are going to be necessary to your charter. For example, what is a quorum? To kind of correct my earlier faux pas about not being able to count to seven. So if you reduce it from seven members to, to five members, obviously that's going to require corollary changes to the charter and that's all set forth in the in the errata sheet and the, the changes that are in the errata sheet are not, I would say substantive in nature in that the primary change is what I'm calling it, is to go from six council members to four. But nonetheless, the, the changes, I think, are, are good ones in that they were appropriate to be made here. And those are in red line, as you can see in, in the errata. And one of the main changes was in connection with formatting because what you see in your packet, beginning at page one twenty-one, is the resolution and it runs through pages one twenty eight. And then, as you'll see in the errata sheet, there's what I would refer to as the, the main resolution, if you will, or the, the resolution. And that appears in the errata at pages, they're numbered at the bottom, pages one through one through five. And what has been done, if you look at section four, which is on page three of the errata, there's attached to this resolution what we call Exhibit A. And Exhibit A is the one that begins on page, after page six of the resolution, and that Exhibit A identifies the to change, the proposed changes to the charter, including the ones that I mentioned in my earlier comments about the, the effect of reducing the numbers from six to four. So if we want to just go through these articles, I think that would be of, of help. And the first change is to Article six. And you can see it there, it's, it's in a red line format or strike through format. So the number six for six council members is reduced to four. That's Article six. And in Article eleven, which appears at the next page, well, it starts at the bottom of that page and rolls over to the next page, that in the event of a vacancy in the office of the mayor, the remaining council members shall appoint by three affirmative votes rather than four. So I'll pause here for a moment to say that's an example of what I was referring to earlier that once you go from six council members to four, that drives other changes. And this is an example of one of those other changes. Another example is in Article twelve, which is further down in that page where it talks about three council members being elected. That's been reduced to two. If you turn the page to Article thirteen in terms of the meetings of the city council and that the council may cancel, I'm reading further down in the text, that the council may cancel one of the meetings as the circumstances require by four affirmative votes. So previously it was five. Article fifteen is on ordinances. You would need an affirmative vote of three members rather than four because under the government code, you're required to have a majority of your membership, not just a majority of your quorum, to take action on ordinances. So that's why that section reads that way. Further on in the Article fifteen subsection D, there's a reference to five votes. This is with respect to an emergency measure. So rather than five votes, it would be sufficient to have four. Article nineteen, which is the city manager, is to be appointed by the affirmative vote of, of five. And here it's been changed from five sevenths to four fifths, which basically four. Continue on to the next page. There's a reference in terms of the city manager's duties and subsection F, which talks about attending meetings unless excused here by two members or by the mayor. There's a similar provision with respect to the city attorney in Article twenty-four, at the bottom of that page, and that change appears on the next page where the excuse for the city attorney to miss a meeting would be permitted by two members of the council or by the mayor. I'm, I'm getting towards the end here. Article twenty-six, appoint of commissions and boards. They can be approved by four, three members rather than four. And the they are deserved the pleasure, they may be removed again by a vote of three instead of four. There were a, a number of changes that were necessary that Councilmember Coletti found in his research of what is on file with the state in terms of your charter. And one of those is found on the top of the next page where you'll see the reference to City Planning Commission under Section A. And the state has it, has all capital letters. So in order to be consistent with what's on file with the state, those changes have been proposed. And there's just, I keep promising this, but I, one day I'll fulfill that. We're getting close to the end. If you go to the next page, this has to do with contracts on public works, reducing the number of votes from five to four. You'll see that appears in two places. And then in terms of the ballot description, there's a, a number of suggested changes here in terms of the effective date of when the number of council members is reduced and that will be dependent upon which article would be applied. And that also appears, if you go to the next page under Part Four, for effective dates, we've outlined the effective date for each of the proposed amendments for each of the articles. And you'll see that all of them would become effective on November third of two thousand twenty-six, except for Amendment of Article twelve, which becomes effective November fifth of two thousand twenty-four. And then there's a severability clause that's the final provision. That's identified as Part Five. And basically, without reading through this entire severability clause, the purpose of this is that if one of these amendments, for whatever reason, is found to be legally invalid, usually because of a court challenge, the remaining changes would, would remain in effect. So you don't want to lose everything you've done because one, one section is found to be invalid. So that's the staff report and I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Do we have any public comment?
We have one online public commenter, Mr. Mayor. Robert Hewitt.
Mayor Peak and council members, good evening. My name is Robert Hewitt. And I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to this charter amendment. In previous communications to you, I've given a number of reasons why I think a seven-member council is better for local democratic self-government, including that it creates more opportunities for citizens to get involved in public service through election to local office, which also enables increased diversity of representation. And I don't understand how you can further the goals of more diversity, equity, and inclusion by reducing opportunities to serve. So please, don't adopt this resolution. At a time when American democracy is facing unprecedented challenges, we must do everything we can to nurture it here in our own community and local government. The proposed charter amendment is a step in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence Undimer.
Welcome. Thank you. This is a resolution for submitting a ballot measure, which leaves it up to the voters, which are entitled to elect their representatives. And as far as diversity, I'm sure we can get enough diversity and finish a meeting on time, even with a lower number. And if all the other And if all the other cities can do it, I'm sure we can too. Once upon a time, I was against this idea. But this, believe me, its time has come. So let's get it on the ballot and see what the voters think. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the online public comment.
Council discussion on the item. Mayor Protem Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. The former mayor, Robert Hewitt, said, really, I have a few other comments. I believe we should stay with makes common sense that we stay with seven council members. He already talked about there's that brings more diverse candidates to the council. It also provides diverse opinions from seven council members down to five. With seven, they're more sensitive to the Pacific Grove needs. More council discussions will help with this with seven members. And also brings a diverse opinion about the city attorney and the city manager's valuation. Provides leadership and guidance to the city of Pacific Grove and provides many other subcommittees. There's a ton of subcommittees we have. And I know we all share in those, all seven of us. I know I'm on three in one plus one outside agency. This also provides a great advisory for all of our Pacific Grove employees. They're able to reach us. The four members, the the representation representatives are not to represent a council like Planning Commission or Rec Board. It's not going to be evenly divided with five. And plus, you know, there's different events that happening. For example, the Fourth of July Parade, the Walk of Remembrance. And some people cannot make it on the council, and a lot of us will make these with seven members. I think it makes quite common sense that we stay with seven members. And plus, it has served our city for ninety-five years, and we should keep that in mind. And that is my opinion of staying with seven members.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think we need to keep the focus on this is ballot still just going to a ballot measure. So the last say will be with our voters. But I I my comments are that beyond, you know, the obvious reason that ninety percent of all California cities have five and that every every city in Monterey County has five, except for Salinas, which is much, much larger than our city, and that is the reason for the larger number of representatives. I still think there are a lot of other reasons in in addition to that to reduce the size. I think it's funny because I I said this to somebody and they laughed. I said politicians don't often come forward with measures to reduce their numbers. And so I think this is kind of a peculiar thing because we're it's coming from a place of wanting to improve city government here in our town. And and surprise, I think, you know, last time we did vote on this already, we had five people in favor up here. And so that's kind of a a sign to me that there's there's some good support up here for for this measure or for at least putting it toward the to the ballot. I think it will increase. I I think having five could increase city efficiency in meetings and outside of meetings. I think it lowers some costs, lowers some burden on staff regarding communications. I think it actually offers more time for public input and diverse opinions because there's less time council members and more time for the public to give input and a less discussion and and more. I think it also allows public members of the public to contact their council members more easily and make their opinions known because there aren't so many that they have to reach or feel that they have to reach. I mean, this has been, we've already voted on this once, and we're going to do it again tonight. And I think that it does ultimately prepare the the city for its move towards district elections. And that's really critical because there's it would be nearly impossible. I couldn't see a way you could have six, six districts. You could have four pretty easily. So and it would make sense. So I think that's that's where things are headed, and this is looking forward. And if the voters agree, then it'll it'll be so. And but those those are pretty much the reasons why I supported it the first time.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And I concur with everything that Councilmember Smith said, especially when we're looking forward to, you know, being prepared and aligned for for district voting. And and I think that that is important. If we were a six district council in a two point two square mile city, you know, both Councilmember Smith and I during our term, we are renters and we both had to move. And we would have lost our seats. And so I think it's important when we're looking forward. You know, we're wanting that diversity. We're wanting renters. And I I think that that's an important voice to have here on the council. And as we know, housing is impossible in this city, and that would be awful to lose, you know, very good council members because they're not homeowners. And so, you know, for me, I think with if the voters, I mean, number one, this is just going to a ballot measure. So that's that's a given. I mean, that's a very easy let the voters decide. But I do think that, you know, looking out down the future, when we're talking about efficiency in government, we're talking about getting through our meeting agendas. You know, to have five, I I think to have five exceptional council members who are prepared and up here doing the good work, it it is going to benefit the city. Just because something has been done for a hundred years doesn't mean we still have to keep doing it. And so thank you to Councilmember Garfield and Councilmember Coletti. Like this has kind of been an ongoing conversation for some time and and I'm I'm pleased that, you know, we're we're going in the right direction here. So thank you.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, as you all of you, the council may know, I don't buy into the arguments, and I'm not in favor of this amendment. But I do volunteer to serve, to write a rebuttal. And I I would like to volunteer for that. Thanks.
Actually, that would be probably the primary argument against.
Right.
But you could also volunteer for the rebuttal.
Both. And actually, speaking of which, I wanted to confirm from a rebuttal argument perspective, it's a lower word limit, right, Sandra? Is it two hundred words, two fifty words?
Hi.
As opposed to three hundred.
Yes, yes, sir. Through the mayor, council member, it's two hundred and fifty.
Do council members get special privileges?
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is something that has, you know, we we definitely talked about it last time, and I helped bring the conversation forward mostly in the sense of I wanted to have the conversation. And I wanted to know the nuts and bolts of what needed to happen in order to to contemplate this decision. So, you know, whether it's a good idea or not is also a really big part of it. We've we've ironed out the nuts and bolts of what needs to happen to go from six to four. Put it up, you know, asking the public, I think, is always a good decision. And then how to elect folks in order to end up at the end result. With the district zoning kind of staring us down, it it definitely makes a lot of logical sense. That being said, I mean, it does impact me to hear from a nineteen-year veteran of a council member of Robert Hewitt. And even my colleagues up here, it it makes it an impact on me to hear that you know, they they believe having more people and the diversity the shared burden, I suppose, or or opportunity, not a burden. But to to tackle all of our tasks with seven of us is a luxury versus five, I would imagine in the end. And so I I do hear that argument. I I think in the end, we're all going to get to cast a vote, all seven of us. And I I may very well help you write the argument against for it, for, you know, as as we hear more about this topic. But at here tonight, I do think going ahead and putting it to the voters is is a good idea and something that that we should take the next step for and be prepared rather than kind of have it forced on us with the district elections. So I support, and I actually don't have any edits to the proposed resolution as it's as it's submitted to us. Thanks.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I heard someone during the public comments make mention something about, you know, democracy and 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 seeing that that is fostered and well, there's nothing more democratic than involving the citizenry and how their government is formed and and what the what the form of that government is. And that's what a charter is. It is the expressed will of the people on how their government shall be formed. And quite frankly, I'm I'm baffled by anyone who would oppose having the citizenry decide how their government is formed. And I've heard something about diversity, you know. When you're on council for nineteen years, that's a seat you occupied. You didn't allow anyone else to get into it. So that's that's not helping out with diversity. But be as that as it may, the May eighteenth agenda, I think, is a good source of reasons why this does make sense. Some of my colleagues have mentioned the districting that is probably coming our way sooner than later. But I'm not going to make the argument for, I think, well, excuse me, I'm not going to sit here and waste time making the argument for, let's get it out to the people and let them decide. I think there is a provision in the resolution for authorizing the mayor to make the ballot argument in favor. So I look forward to this getting on the ballot and letting the voters decide how they want their government organized. Thank you.
I thank Councilmember Coletti for bringing this forward. I think that in a nutshell, that having a five-person council makes it a stronger council. And I think diversity is not necessarily on the numbers of people. If that were the case, then we should have ninety-nine people on council. But I think it's the way they look at including people and different values of different citizens. And I think the more people you have, actually, the more you tend to the status quo. And and that's one one of my reasons for saying why I think a smaller council is a stronger council. And I also heard the comments about, well, there'll be less people to convince on council to make a change. And to me, that's that's perhaps the most important thing. But there's other district elections certainly plays plays into it. But, you know, but let the voters decide. So anyhow, I'm not hearing any changes to.
I I have one on page four of the errata under section eleven. Line six begins with the numbers ninety-two, eighty-five, and then there's an A. There should be a parentheses around the A.
Sorry, what page in the?
Page four of the errata. Section eleven.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yes, we certainly would like all our materials submitted to the Monterey County Elections Department to be accurate and not to be rejected after the voters have passed them or defeated them, whatever. Okay, and were there any other changes, Mayor Protem Emilio?
Yeah, just a just a quick comment. I'll help you, Councilmember Pedori, on the against thing. I also wanted to mention, you know, there was a comment, I don't usually editorialize, I I never do this, but mayor, former mayor Protem, Robert Hewitt was on this council for a long time. And he sat right right next to me when I first started in twenty eighteen, and he was quite a mentor to me personally. He brought up a lot of very, very thoughtful processes. And and I I totally respect him for being on the council for so long. And I just wanted to bring that up. And also, I cannot, I'm not going to be voting for this resolution either.
Any Councilmember McAdams?
I am happy to make a motion.
Please.
Great. I move that we adopt a resolution submitting a ballot measure to amend the Pacific Grove City Charter to change the number of city council members from six to four by directing one. And two thousand twenty-four, two council members shall be elected to four-year terms. And one city council member shall be elected to a single two-year term. And two, every two years thereafter, beginning in two thousand twenty-six, two city council members shall be elected to four-year terms. And three, enact consistent charter changes to clarify a quorum, majority vote, and other select actions. And four, ordering an election requesting the Monterey County Elections Department conduct the election and consolidate it with the statewide elections to be held on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Just to add to that, in the form of the resolution that was contained in the errata received by the council is modified here tonight.
Check. Yes.
Second. Have a vote, please.
My volume seems to be down. My apologies. Can I get the second on that? Was that Councilmember Coletti?
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmembers Tomlinson.
Aye.
Pedori.
No.
Coletti.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio.
No.
Mayor Peak.
Aye.
Motion carries five-two.
We're now moving on to item twelve D, short-term rental software update. Do we have Mr. Butler available?
Mr. Mayor, I believe he's online. Mr. Butler, are you still with us? There he is.
I'm still here. Thank you. Good evening, or should I say good night, everybody? Mayor, City Council members of the public. I'm just going to quickly read the agenda item one more time, just to kind of refresh why we're here today. As requested by the city council, after reviewing Councilmember McAdams' presentation on Granite Kids Post Compliance Software at the city council meeting on May nineteenth to twenty twenty-one, the community development department staff conducted interviews with several local jurisdictions and looked into several software offerings that would be of assistance to the city in its ongoing enforcement of the short-term rental violations. The city conducted a request for proposal in November of two thousand twenty-one for STR software and review proposals on December twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-one. The successful bidder was Deckard Technologies with the RentalScape platform. Deckard was awarded a seven thousand dollar annual contract with the city on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. The co-compliance officer has worked with Deckard Technologies utilizing the software since late February and found thirteen unlicensed short-term rentals. The city has collected approximately seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents in administrative penalties. The revenue from the penalties has essentially covered the cost of the annual software contract of the seven thousand dollars. And I'll also be presenting a brief overview of the Deckard Technologies and the attached PowerPoint. Can Sandra, can you pull that up, please? So SDR program update overview of Deckard Technologies software. Why are we here? The city of Pacific Grove has signed a contract with Deckard Technologies to enhance some Why are we here? The city of Pacific Grove has signed a contract with Deckard Technologies to enhance enforcement of the ordinance that regulates the short-term rentals to assist the solo effort by the code compliance officer. Who is Deckard Technologies? Deckard Technologies utilizes RentalScape, a complete STR platform for local governments that identifies, tracks, reports, STR registrations, and booking activities. On this page, we have a closer look at RentalScape. This is essentially the page that when you log into the software program, you're shown a map. Don't be alarmed, these dots on this map are of all STR advertisements as well as long-term advertisements, thirty-day, thirty consecutive days or twenty-nine nights. So it's basically just showing every ad that is listed on all platforms throughout the city. And then on the right-hand side there, if we click on, if I were to click on one of the dots, this would be what would be shown. Just a brief overview of the property, how many beds, how many bathrooms, and how much they have generated, as well as A P M. What is provided in the RentalScape software, a list of all licenses, licensed properties, and their advertisement needs and property details. A list of unlicensed live STR properties and property details. Currently, at the time I made this PowerPoint, it was showing seventeen properties. A list of all licensed properties and property details, long-term rentals for more than thirty consecutive days as well. So we were able to track not only the short-term rental, but also the long-term rentals as well. A list of unidentified listings currently at the time of this PowerPoint, which was not showing any a dashboard showing the unit type, most active top platforms, post-revenue, and T O T that each property collected. Here's just an example of when I clicked on, basically, the second icon on the left, which shows little dots in the line. It provides a list of unlicensed short-term rental data. From the top, we have the short-term licensed properties is what we are seeing right now, as well as unlicensed live STR properties, all unlicensed properties, and unidentified listings. An example of what would be found under the unidentified listing would be properties that are listed as a thirty-day or longer rental, AKA a long-term rental, like a hotel, et cetera. They are unable to locate them because they only show photos of the interior of the unit. So based off the software program that they use, they're unable to identify that. But being that I'm familiar with the area, I'm able to identify just based on the interior photos that it is sure is about a hotel. Mainly what I'm looking at on here is I go into the unlicensed live STR properties. Unfortunately, I could not provide a report of that due to some of the properties on there being possible code violations, so I was unable to provide the list of that on today's PowerPoint. Next slide, I'm available for any questions if needed on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
None virtual, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion on this item? Well, I'll start off by thanking Mr. Butler very much for doing this, and this is an important topic. And I would say I'll call him an unsung hero for doing code compliance. A lot of folks that he encounters during the day are probably not too happy with the message, but this is absolutely important to upholding our municipal laws and regulations. And I thank him for doing his job. So, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this is Mr. Butler's first presentation before the council. This is not something he normally does. So I just want to thank Mr. Butler for doing a great job and for also sticking around this evening. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Andrew.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I have a question. Perhaps the city manager can help us. So who is in charge staff-wise of the STR program? And is it still in accounting department? Has it moved back to community economic development? If you could elaborate, that would be very helpful.
Sure. So it's split two ways. If you are applying for a license, it's through the administrative services department. The code enforcement function is all through the compliance officer in community development. So the actual administration of the licensed properties is downstairs. The finding of the unlicensed properties is upstairs.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Butler, for the presentation and information.
Councilmember Pedory?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would say I've heard Mr. Andrew Butler's name a lot, but I've never seen his face. So thank you for that. The question to me was, the agenda item says a direction regarding the STR and enforcement software. So is this like an annual contract? Is the contract done? Are you expecting council to make it annual from now on? What is expected?
Thank you, Councilmember Pedory. I think I might have wanted to change that recommendation in the agenda report. Mostly, we wanted to come tonight to show you the software, what it does, what it looks like, what we're able to find. We plan on continuing to use it, and we may come back to you if we need to embellish it in any way, shape, or form, but it's been successful for us so far. So thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Councilmember Tomlinson?
I just was gonna, I mean, everyone can read, but my takeaway on this was that just since February, we've collected the amount that it costs to have this annual software at our fingertips. So it's absolutely going to pay for itself. So if we do continue to use it year over year, it's kind of paying for itself. So I think that is great. Thanks. And thank you, Mr. Butler. I also did not know what you look like, but I also know, but I do know that you're very effective and you do really great work. So thank you.
Okay, this was a report, so no vote. We'll move on to item thirteen A, Special Events Policy nine hundred dash one. Ms. Kendall.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and members of the public. At the DEI Task Force meeting of June thirteenth, the proposed amendments were approved by the task force for supplemental to the city council for its consideration. Staff recommendation to council tonight is to approve the proposed amendments to the Special Events Policy nine hundred dash one. I believe our chair, Tina Rao, is online if any questions arise. And that concludes staff report tonight. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Marsha Wright?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The city of Pacific Grove is mandated by federal and state laws to follow all the tenants of the Civil Rights Act, including the ADA. The recommendations of the DEI Task Force seem to me to be redundant for the most part and questionable in one part in particular. That is, the inclusion of a category labeled, quote-unquote, neurodivergent people in its non-discrimination policy recommendation. What does the DEI Task Force mean? Does the DEI Task Force want city employees to inquire about private mental health issues of people wanting to attend special events so that medical staff can be on standby? I hope city council will disregard the latest special events recommendation by the DEI Task Force. I don't think any good will come from adopting what a small group of activists want for the city of Pacific Grove. Let's continue to follow federal and state laws as they exist without questionable, unnecessary tweaks. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes online public comment.
Council discussion on this. Councilmember Pedory?
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I know the DEI group has spent a lot of time on this, so I'm good with the amendments as they are. There are some minor edits that I wanted to point out, and thank you, Ms. Chiani, for raising this. But page number one forty-one of the agenda packet where it refers to neurodivergent or N D, that sentence, instead of the word brand, it needs to be brain, like B R A I N. And in the same sentence, and cognition, the word
What could you just tell us again slowly? What page?
It's page one forty-one of the agenda packet, the city council policy for special events.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and in the red text where it talks about neurodivergent, there are a couple of edits. One of them is, instead of saying human brand, it needs to be human brain. And after the, in the same line, and cognition, comma, four, instead of or, it should say four. It's a, the sentence should read, in the human brain and cognition, for instance, insociability, learning, attention, et cetera. So those are the only two kind of items. And thank you again, Ms. Chiani, for pointing that out.
I'll make a comment. Thank you to the task force for doing this work, and I appreciate it. So I'm fine with the ADA requirements, the non-discrimination policy. What I suggest is, the, when we get under the purpose, those two sentences are very general, could apply to a whole multitude of city activities. And they're not specifically directed at special events. So I'm suggesting we direct the DEI Task Force a couple of good sentences and find out a better place, maybe our council mission, vision, value statement, or perhaps a standalone council policy. It's just, this is kind of an awkward place on these particular sentences. So that's my suggestion. Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to confirm, you're talking about the ADA requirements?
No, I'm talking about the city under purpose, at the very top, special events and purpose, sorry. The city of Pacific Grove cultivates an environment of trust and respect for all residents and visitors alike. We strive to ensure that our actions are inclusive and reflective of the diverse community of which we aim to be. Those are very, very general statements, could apply to a lot of things. So I'm just wondering if there's a better place than this particular special events policy.
I, yeah, I totally see that. I mean, and I, the purpose of the policy is to provide guidance of the conduct of special events, et cetera, et cetera. So I see that. But I'd like to thank the DEI for this work, and they just, they do exceptional work, and I do see the importance of having this in our events policy to make sure that, you know, what the city is approving and allowing and providing taxpayer dollars for sponsorships or, you know, with support of staff. I do really appreciate that this is specific and also quoting the Civil Rights Act, Civil Rights Restoration Act, et cetera. So I fully support this, and thank you to the DEI for doing this work.
Councilmember Pedory?
Yeah, I was just going to comment on what you had requested for the purpose of those three, three, or is it two sentences? Just for my clarification, would you like to have those sentences in a different policy? Or are we asking about wordsmithing, what that looks?
No, I'm not asking for wordsmithing. I'm suggesting they be taken out of the special events policy, and let's find a better place for them. And I would think broadly, because, like I said, we, council has mission, vision, values, where we talk about inclusiveness, and it might be there, or it might be a separate policy, maybe standing on its own.
Yeah, so I think that's okay with me. It should be an overarching policy, which is governing this policy. So I think we should be fine with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson? Please.
I move to approve the proposed amendments to the Special Events Policy nine hundred dash one. With the edits that Councilmember Pedory provided, including possibly putting that asterix up where it references the term.
You know, I'll go along with it in a second.
So you're second the motion?
I second the motion.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Do we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Pedory?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Clitty?
Aye.
Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you, everyone. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Thank you to the public that have been participating, to staff, folks here in the audience, council. Everyone have a good night. Meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Have a nice evening.